Yeah, you're welcome.
Welcome, everyone. It is our pre-meeting and I'll just go around and ask councilors if they have anything to report first. Councilor Zeit?
I do not.
And happy birthday tomorrow. So the world goes. Councilor Novella?
I'm not.
Councilor Baker?
Nope.
Councilor Seymour?
An outstanding week at CML and I will be preparing my notes in a readable fashion. There's some out-- yeah, I'll have to read them and then ask somebody else to read them. But I have some slide decks on there too, so yeah, outstanding breakouts. I guess the good and the bad of CML is you-- we're very lucky here for the resources that we have in our city and the people we have. There was one of the breakouts where they discussed some of the smaller towns and cities where, you know, people do regularly-- The director of this and the snowplow driver and it's just whatever it takes to get that town moving along, so good. I have a lot of admiration for those public servants and staff that keep Colorado moving. That's it though.
It was a great conference. I'll write up my notes. Just didn't get it done today. We had our 16-year-old Pud decide today was her last day on earth, so it was a tough day. I'm not at my best. I told Acting City Manager Opie, "Just bring it on if I miss something because I am not totally present tonight." But it was a great conference. Their 100th year anniversary was wonderful with Hazel Miller onstage and Av's game going here. She'd even stopped the song and they'd play the music, but she'd watch and see if we scored. It was a great time, great food, great camaraderie. That's what you miss when you don't get to go to those things. Sitting with somebody on my right with the city of 136 and somebody sitting over here with somebody in the 200,000s, it's just a great experience to-- here we have the same issues, we just go about how to solve things a little differently and some unique ways of doing that, especially when you are lean and mean. It's always fascinating to me. So it was great. Do we have anything else? No? Nobody? Well, we can go stare at each other outside for 25 minutes.
Take a walk. Anyone want to try a bar? Say no. They're not bad.
That was--
Welcome to tonight's meeting of June 27, 2022. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Present.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Present.
Counselor Emmons. Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Mayor McNally.
Present.
Counselor Normella.
Here.
And Counselor Seymour.
Here.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we excuse Counselor Emmons from tonight.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Counselor Emmons from tonight's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to consideration of the minutes. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the June 13, 2022 meeting as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of June 13, 2022. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to public comment.
We have two people signed up to speak, and their first speaker is Chris Stimson.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The article being passed out to you came to my attention less than a week ago. It's worth reading at your convenience or wherever you're sitting at the time. It describes how the city of Hoboken, New Jersey, a city with about half the population of Westminster, has gone four years without a traffic fatality by using a strategy of street planning known as daylighting. In brief, daylighting means aggressively installing elements proven to make cities safer and more efficient for everyone: bike lanes, curb extensions, bus lanes, high-visibility crosswalks, and raised intersections. In Hoboken, you're physically prevented from parking a vehicle within 25 feet of a crosswalk or intersection by the physical trappings of daylighting, which could be bike racks, planters, storm drains, pylons, or extra sidewalk space. This means that when you're about to step out into a crosswalk, you have an uninterrupted view of traffic that may be approaching it. Other cities around the country may have such a parking regulation, but experience shows that without those physical trappings, it's routinely ignored and just as routinely unenforced. On the topic of bike lanes, by the way, some months ago it was said from City Council's podium that we should be a car-friendly city and should not have bike lanes. As chance would have it, at about the same time that the City Councilor made this disgruntled remark, the state of Colorado released its report on traffic accidents in the state in 2021. One of the authors of this report noted the large number of accidents that occurred at intersections with two lanes entering and two lanes leaving. Now, it just so happens that bike lanes at intersections tend, not always, but often, to reduce the number of lanes entering and leaving the intersection. So, following the findings of the state report, it would seem that bike lanes actually enhance public safety, and we do like to promote the idea of Westminster as a safe city, don't we? Returning to Hoboken for a moment, the city's transportation and parking director has discovered it's easier to make safety improvements to dangerous corridors when it's time to repave a road. Thus, any road with lots of crashes and proximity to schools, hospitals, and parks is given wider sidewalks and medians when it gets a fresh layer of asphalt. Simple, huh? So, by all means, read the article, counselors, and understand that some of the things you're objecting to actually make the city safer. And I would rather live in a city that is safer for the people who live in it, walk in it, and ride in it than for the vehicles that drive through it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dino Valente.
Welcome.
Good evening, members of council, Mayor McNally, Mayor Protem. Couple items tonight. One, last week was June 13, Juneteenth, and I know there's some conflict right now in who's celebrating, who's not. And I don't care anybody's views. But it was also sales tax due date, and our city wound up out of sync with the state of Colorado. Lots of people were late filing because the state was due the 21st, because Westminster was open. You were due the 20th. Nobody knew. Your tax crew are good people. They forgave any late fees, et cetera, for that. And they're in their transition from the system they have to one that works. So, it made everybody have two things by hand, just communicate better on stuff like that. Two, this evening on your agenda, you have consideration of appointments. I would encourage you to take a second look at your appointment for special permits and licensing. This is a person who was involved with the business that pulled a permit, then did all of, or I should say, applied for a permit, then did all of the work before the permit was issued, and the city put a stop-work order on the business, and that business is now being done. There's more I can't say for legal reasons, but I'm not sure that's somebody you want on your special permits and licensing board. And finally, as I sit here tonight, I realize it is Chief Doug Hall's last meeting, and I wanted to personally say thank you for all of the years. You have been our chief, our fire marshal, a fireman. I am blessed to have known you and all you do, and I wish you and the family nothing but the best in the future. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any live or voicemails?
We don't have any live virtual speakers or voicemails.
Thank you. If there's anyone that didn't get signed up but does want to talk to us, come to the podium, please. Scene 01, that brings us to report of city officials. Acting City Manager Opie.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem and counselors. As acting city manager, while city manager Andrews is away on vacation, it's my pleasure to provide you with an update today for the city manager's report. I would first like to highlight the Triple Crown Sparkler softball tournament that begins this week and runs through July 3. Westminster is the host site for this tournament that has over 900 teams visiting from across the nation and all over the world. We expect around 10,000 spectators at the many tournament games across the Front Range, with up to 25,000 attendees expected for the All-Star Futures Game on June 29. Mayor McNally will be throwing out the first pitch at the All-Star Futures Game at Christopher Ballfield's, Softball Fields Complex. I believe the tickets are sold out, but thankfully, the game will also be livestreamed on ESPN3 in case anyone would like to see the mayor in action.
A good laugh, at least.
We welcome all the many visitors to our wonderful community and hope that they enjoy their time here. With that, I would like to turn to focus on city business. In tonight's post-city council meeting, staff has two items related to quality of life based on city council's direction. One is related to airplane noise issues from Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, and another is focused on the city's response to graffiti. We have time on tonight's post-meeting for city council to discuss the RMMFA Community Noise Roundtable. In the staff report, we've provided you an overview of the Community Noise Roundtable, including their purpose and scope. We also have invited our lobbyists on federal issues to help answer any questions that city council may have. Then, our graffiti response team will be joining us tonight to provide an overview of graffiti in the city and the challenges and potential opportunities to address graffiti in our community. The last item on tonight's agenda is focused on the capital improvement program, which is the next step in the city's 2023 budget development process. Staff will provide an overview of the different types of projects and funding sources. Finally, I would like to conclude the city manager's report by acknowledging and thanking Fire Chief Doug Hall. Chief, would you please stand?
Why don't you come on down?
Come on up, please. After 43 years of service to our community, this is Chief Hall's last week as the leader of our fire department. In fact, today marks Chief Hall's 11th anniversary as our fire chief. Chief Hall has developed a talented leadership team, and we are grateful that he leaves the city with a strong and committed fire department. He has served with integrity and humor. Please join me in thanking Chief Hall for his service.
Thank you. It's been my honor. Thank you.
And with that, I conclude my remarks. Thank you.
And Chief, I think they want a picture of us, so come on down. And counsel, meet him down front. Thank you. I'll just start down. Counselor Azadi, anything tonight? Counselor Normella?
I also just want to wish Chief Hall a happy next stage of your life, and I really enjoy being able to work with you for many years. And I really appreciate the culture that you created with the fire department, both for excellence, but also for creativity, and for working really collaboratively with other departments in the city. And that just made it all the better. So, thank you, and I hope you have a good legacy to carry on.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also would like to thank Chief Hall. I always often joke with him that we see his face more than any staff member, no offense to the rest of the staff, but Chief Hall is certainly, I can't think of very many meetings that you haven't been in since I've been on council or when I used to sit in the audience for four years, because that's what some of us do for fun on Monday nights. So, thank you for your service. I know that the city's in good hands because you left behind you a strong department because of your leadership. One, two other quick items. One, I want to thank the Parks and Rec people who helped put on the Top Taco event on Thursday. I don't know, I know I saw a couple staff members, but fantastic event, very well attended, lots of good food and drink. So, that was a great event. I hope we see that again in the future. And then, lastly, I hope that people decide to enjoy our fireworks display on Monday. The event starts at 4:00 PM at City Park. You can check out the city website, cityofwestminster.us, for details around that, where you can do the different shuttle services and such that they have. That's a great opportunity to come together and celebrate America.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you. Also, congratulations to Chief Hall. He is an outstanding fire chief and even a better sergeant-at-arms for Rotary. We are missing the money that he drags in for our foundation, so thank you, Chief, for that. And I do have a prediction for the Sparkler. I believe the mayor will have a no-hitter. You can throw your bets out for that.
Counselor Baker.
Hi there. I was really reminded this week of the phrase that we hear most often in real estate: "Time is of the essence." And time is very important, and sometimes we forget the importance of time. It applies to lots of other things besides real estate ventures. I was disappointed this week when a friend of mine sent me a picture of the blown-up house on Knox Court, and the pile of junk is still there. And this is after we've been promised by CDHP that all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted. We were informed that of the responsible parties have said they would take charge of this, and yet, this pile of junk is still there. We've been led to believe that it's not an immediate hazard or risk, but there is some of that element. And two is, when is it gonna go? I mean, the people who live in that block and the people who live in that neighborhood need to have an answer. And I think that our city management is going to redouble their efforts on that front. But as a consequence of that junk being there, now there's a junky truck and a trailer and someone who's camped out there. Now, mercifully, we have dealt with that, and that is going to be cleared up soon. But the asbestos-contaminated trash from the blown-up house needs to go, and we can't let it slip from our radars because this has a direct impact on the quality of lives, especially for the people in that neighborhood. And we owe them a response. And furthermore, we owe everyone in the city that this situation is not going to happen again. And we need to know why it happened, how it happened, and how we can avoid it in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Chief Hall, thank you. Heartfelt thanks to everything you have done for this community. You live in our community. You are part of our community. And we look forward to seeing you in other ways. And my heart just says, have fun. And I know you have plans with family, and enjoy every second of that. But thank you for all you've done for us as a city. Besides Sparkler Tournament, we also have After the Fourth, and do come to the Fourth. If there's anybody in Parks and Rec sitting here, I just need to know if I can walk from my house to the park. If there's any bridges, I know of two bridges I can get to from my house to cross. to cross over to be over there when I'm supposed to be over there, or if I'm going to have to give up and drive. But anyway, that's all I need to know, if anybody can get me that answer. And then, and it's just because I haven't had time to go check out the bridges to see what's open and not. Then, July 9th, which we won't see you before then, is Vintage Baseball from 10:00 to noon at 76th and Wolf. That same day is Historic Tour from 10:00 to 1:00, and you meet at Wolf Run at 76th and Wolf. You need to pay for that and do that online. And I don't know how close they are to being sold out. But then, the third thing is they're having another festival down at 73rd and Bradburn that same day. It's a fun-filled day, freebies except for the bus tour, and time for community to be together. So, I just wanted to remind everybody, lots of great times coming up in the next few weeks. I hope everybody has a very safe Fourth and a fun one. If there's nothing else, I will just update you verbally with what I know about the City Manager's search. I had a phone call yesterday from our search firm, and we told you last week, we had 33. They had it down to around 11. They did more background checks. They did more interviews. They asked for more paperwork to be filled out by those 11, and I was given seven names yesterday. I distributed those to City Council, which is confidential, and those names won't be released. We will start interviewing July 6th, 7th, and 8th. If we have to, on the 9th is a holdover. Just in case we have a slot, we need to fill that early evening for that date. But that is what we know as of today. And as I said today on Live with the Chamber, things now are in such a situation that we have to get through each piece to know what the next piece is going to be, because I can't predict what the first piece is going to be. So, we will make those decisions as we go. We will continue to let you all know. We will let you know when there's time to participate. And so, just stay tuned. But once we get started, our hope is to keep going so we don't hold the city up, we don't hold the candidates up, that we can go in a pace that we feel comfortable, but can make a decision, and everybody get on with their lives. So, that's where we're at with that, and I have nothing else on that. So, consent agenda, do I have a motion? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt the consent agenda items 8A through 8B.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass agenda items 8A and B. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker. Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Izadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor, or sorry, Counselor Numella.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
Thanks. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 23, appointing new and alternate members to the Election Commission, Inclusivity Board, Parks, Recs, Libraries, and Open Space Advisory Board, and Special Permits and License Board, respectively.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the appointments for Resolution Number 23. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Izadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Numella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Baker.
No.
The motion passes on a 5-1 vote.
That brings us to public hearings, item A1.
We have no one that has signed up to speak at the public hearing.
Okay. Is there anybody that's here that wanted to speak on the public hearing that didn't sign up? Seeing no one, I will open the public hearing at 7:22 and close it at 7:22. That brings us to item 8, 2. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 24, approving the amended and restated service plan for the Orchard Park Place South Metropolitan District.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 24. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Numella?
I just had a question on this one. For the off-site public improvements that were listed as part of the financing plan for this, are these just, the numbers that are associated with each of the elements, are they the area's share of the total improvement for a broader area? And have they been completed or not?
Good evening. Lindsay Kimble, Economic Development Director. None of the improvements have been completed. What is listed there are future improvements that would be completely for the benefit of the project.
Oh, this was for, sorry, I should have mentioned, my question was for the off-site improvements.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, so the off-site improvements would be for additional users benefit.
So, are the numbers that are associated, because it's like about a $9 million portion for all the capital improvements associated? So, I'm assuming those aren't, those are just portions of
Yes, correct.
the total cost of those offsites? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Counselor Izadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Numella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to Resolution 25. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 25, setting a public hearing on July 25th, 2022, at 7:00 PM for consideration of petition to form the Foster Farm Business Improvement District and directing the city clerk to cause notice of hearing to be published and mailed pursuant to the Business Improvement District Act, being Part 12 of Article 25, Title 31, CRS.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution Number 25. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Counselor Numella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
And Counselor Izadi.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That brings us to item C1. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move, based on the recommendation of the City Manager, to determine that public interest will be best served by ratifying sole vendor purchase from L.N. Curtis, Inc. for $118,010.10.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10C1. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Numella?
I had a question on this one. Just curious, are these, it seems like the significant amount of money that was not anticipated for expenditures this year? And I was just curious if it was all, if this was related to the Louisville Fire? Or like, just where these numbers came from?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and councilors. Bob Hoze, Deputy Fire Chief. Counselor, these are all budgeted expenditures. They were in the budget. The reason for this is because of the level of spending, the amount of spending is where we're coming for council approval on that. But these are items that are budgeted for standard equipment, such as our firefighter's protective turnout gear, tools and equipment for the trucks, forceful entry, fire hose, everything of that type of nature.
Okay, thank you. It was just a little confusing.
Understand.
For me, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Numella.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Izadi.
Yes.
And Mayor McNally.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I move to authorize sole vendor purchase with L.N. Curtis, Inc. for the remainder of 2022, not to exceed an additional $260,000 for total authorized expenditure, not to exceed $378,010.10 in 2022.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 10C2. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Yes.
Counselor Izadi.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
And Counselor Numella.
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-0 vote.
That is all of our meeting pieces for tonight here. But in our after-meeting, we have four other items we're going to be talking about, and we have cause for an executive session.
Thank you, Mayor. Dave Frankel, City Attorney. There is one executive session that's proposed for City Council this evening, and it is to discuss the city's position on issues subject to formal negotiation and to provide instructions to the city's negotiators regarding a reimbursement request from Community Resources and Housing Development Corporation, as authorized by Westminster Municipal Code 1113C7 and Colorado Revise Statute 2464024E1.
I will poll council if you're willing to go into executive session later this evening, and that you'll keep things confidential. Counselor Izadi? Counselor Numella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally, yes. That concludes tonight's meeting. We will adjourn to the post-meeting. Are we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's go.
First item up, we have the Rocky Mountain Community Roundtable item. So I'll turn it over to staff, Chris Boko and Ms. Lindsay.
Thanks, Barbara. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilwoman Mayor and Mayor Potem. Thank you for your time last evening, or excuse me, last Monday. We have put together some information on the roundtable where we started, where we've come from, where we're at, and that was contained within the staff report. We know there was lots of links and items to read. So Mr. Lindsay and I want to kind of just let you drive the conversation and tell us where you'd like to start and what would be helpful, and we will answer as many questions as we can.
Perfect. And I was able to talk to Mr. Dino.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
At CML, we had a good conversation.
Good. And I'm sorry, Mike. Mr. McDino, our federal lobbyist, is with us virtually and can fill us in on other items you asked about, about the ways we can have noise complaints at the airport.
I know Counselor Emmons has gone, and she's been part of this, but you've been part of it for, and you've heard all of our conversations that led up to the meeting. So after reading everything, being part of it, I mean, the bottom line is, are we going to stay in at $3,000 for one year? As I read things, I know they had agendas last year that they didn't meet, so what?
Stay $3,000? Certainly not. In my, I won't vote to increase it, mostly because until they can tell us that we're going to actually get something for that money besides more talking, like, I think it's not worth the public dollars. I don't see we're getting value out of it. If they want to figure out how we actually come up with a plan where we can address this residents' concern, then I would be willing to do that. But at this point, I haven't seen anything that says increase it for my vote.
And I think it was rather telling in the staff chime in on that, is that even if we get the air of the, the ear of the FFA, FAA, right, we'll get all these right. Yes, Farmers of America. FAA is that even the FAA is resident not to do, deal with any aviation issues because that's what they're there to promote. So that was, that was also telling in that report. So that's where I have a concern where we go from here. And I mentioned this last week, too, is that if we have a seat at the table and it's, at least gives us the conversation to continue that, I always believe in that making that is a good faith attempt. But I've not sat in on those meetings. I've not seen, it sounds like it becomes a bit circular almost every meeting when we get the report. And so I have concerns about upping our level of financial participation. And if we could stay in at the lower level, that just may be a statement unto itself.
If you don't mind, like, to that point, the last meeting that I was able to attend before my work got crazy, Counselor Emmons was going, we had a discussion around increasing. And at that meeting, I actually was on board with increasing because I thought we were actually going to come up with a plan. But that's been like four or five months ago. And all I've heard is, you know, we, A, some of those groups that were, we were about to sign on with are now not interested. And the reason we didn't move forward when we were ready to move forward with actually having somebody who was going to facilitate the meetings at the time, was some of the other members didn't like them because they felt they were too tied to the airport, because some of the work that they had done. So now we've went four or five months to a larger amount from, you know, what we were talking about. And again, there's no, like, actual, like, here's what we're going to actually do. Even if you get a facilitator in, if there's not a agreed-upon goal of what the purpose of the group is, you know, you're just going to keep going circular because I feel like there's a pretty good divide amongst the group about what the, what they should be focusing on. And so that's my other big concern. You know, you, I and Counselor Emmons, we all agreed that we wanted to be a part of it because we were trying to address the, you know, the public's concerns that we were hearing a lot and we still hear a lot about. I just don't see, you know, I would like more from them. So, you know, again, if we have the ability to stay at the level we are and see if we can talk some sense into them and be heard, you know, great. But if, if not, and they don't want to keep us because we're not going to pay more, I guess, you know, we look at other avenues. Because, I mean, ultimately, as much as maybe they won't listen to us, there is ability to lobby to the FAA around certain criteria that you can raise objections to. And I would feel like we spend time better to actually go after those areas that maybe they might listen to us on, which is one of the frustrating parts about, you know, where that group is.
Counselor Baker, any questions?
No. And I'm more than fine saying that didn't work. Let's, let's do something else with the money.
I have some questions. And I have a few questions. How many members are a part of this group?
There are two, four, six, eight currently.
And what are the total coffers that they have in the membership fee?
Everybody pays $3,600.
Okay, so that times eight.
Yes.
How many of those members said yes to the increased fee?
It, one member was absent, and five voted for it, and two were not in favor of the fee increase to $12,000.
Who were the two that were not in favor?
Us and Boulder County.
Okay, so Boulder is officially out?
They're not out. They voted against the increase. They're not out of the roundtable. They just voted against the fees increase.
So do we know who actually is in or out after that vote? So, for example, is Boulder going to actually pay for it?
The way the, I understand the agreement is if you want to continue the dues, you have to pay the dues as required to continue to stay in the roundtable. So that unless Boulder wanted to opt out.
So we don't know if anyone else has opted out? Correct?
Because it isn't until next year that it takes effect. We can pay one more year of $3,600 to take us to 2023.
Okay.
And then next year at this time. Because that's 24 hours worth of time that I could be doing something else.
Okay, so we're really debating if we should actually stay in at the current rate of the $3,000 on the increase rate. My vote would be, it sounds like it has not been discussed, should back up.
Well, you know, I look at the 2022. And that I think would be. How might that benefit the surrounding communities? And it's just some other, you know, just noise reduction that could take place and help the community. I know that we're very limited in terms of what we're able to actually affect, you know, especially with FAA kind of ruling the rules on the flight patterns and, I think, the type of aircraft. Is that correct? I don't know, you know. So I guess, I think it'd be worthwhile to stay in for to see if anything gets accomplished. And, but I would want to put pressure on them to say, done successfully over this past year, to say, let's, you know, go ahead. I know you're, you have more perspective.
They haven't done anything for the past year. That's the problem.
You read last year's report and what they said they were going to do, and it's a big goose egg.
From the time before even, I was sitting there, the things they're talking about, still the things they were talking about when Counselor Stoli was going to it, which Counselor Stoli was maybe five, five, six months of it. And we've seen no actionable anything on it.
How long have we been a member?
It's about a year, about a year. We're coming up on a year.
Just one year.
January 2021 that we commenced the meetings, so it's going in about 18 months.
Is it just the leadership of the group?
What's the, I mean, does it just need better?
There could be a, well, we've had this same chair through, through change. With the November elections, in addition to our staff that changed, there were other staff that changed over. And so there was lots of educational pieces that were done prior to that and are still ongoing. There's always some presentation at the meeting. And so that, that's some of the, I think, the challenge. Actually spoken about that, Mayor Potem, or perhaps Counselor Emmons were in on the conversation when they discussed it's hard to chair and facilitate the group at the same time. And so I think that it has, it has been slow for sure. But I think that's some of, some of what it is. Back in February, we talked about this initial piece. It was basically putting our, our total fees up to around $11,410 to pay for aviation consulting services and the facilitation services. I'm not sure if that's where that number's coming from. That wasn't specifically referenced in the last meeting. To Mayor Potem's point, yeah, the group has, you know, it's been difficult to get some, gain some footing. Whether that's unusual for a roundtable, I don't know. It's a complicated topic.
Oh, sorry.
We're just to clarify. So there's just a chair, and there's really no one behind the scenes, like, working the agenda slash.
We have the Airport Director and his assistant, Mr. Miller, that puts together the agenda at the minute. So there are some staff from Rocky Mountain Airport that do support the work of this group.
But not, okay. I mean, yes, there, it does take time for a group to stand, you know, stand itself up and manage itself. It's, yeah, and without having, I think, the leadership of the group can have a definite impact, right, on how much they're able to get done. And, you know, it's hard to, knowing that we have this sort of funding level for another year, kind of, if something can change, but if, if that thing's going to change over this next year in terms of how it's being led or support for how it's being led, that would probably push me back over to the side of the curve. But if they're able to obtain a facilitator for this coming year, I mean, maybe it could be different. Sorry Pollyanna moment, but I don't know. But will that, are they going to have anyone facilitating for the next year?
They did an RFP and got zero. I don't know. They didn't say what they're going to do next.
I mean, that's my frustration, is they were talking about this last time I went to the meeting, and I was in favor of raising the fees. Four months later, and not only did they not, weren't able to sort through the concerns about the facility approved at that meeting, they now have lost the groups willing to facilitate. So it's like, okay, we give them this check, and then that money sits there. And what, I mean, I, they, I'm like, really, in the same, I just have no confidence that that's what's going to happen with the money. Because we have not been told, if you give us the money, here's what we're going to do. Because we can't agree on what needs to be done. And it seems like every meeting, they go further away from, you know, where the conversation even was, coming to some sort of tangible agreement on a path forward.
I have a question for Mike. What are the alternatives on a lobbying standpoint?
Hi, everyone. Good evening. If you can't hear me well, please let me know. Well, one, you can certainly do your own advocacy with our elected officials on the federal level. Plus, and I heard some folks talk about the FAA, the FAA has a local office where we can certainly start. The regional office is in Seattle, and of course, Washington office in Washington, DC. It's, and as has been discussed, it is a complex issue. My experience with it certainly goes back over 30 years with Denver International Airport in Adams County, our Park Hill neighborhood, which ultimately sued the city and county of Denver, and the airport, which was Stapleton at the time, and, and did precipitate the airport to what was Adams County and annexed into Denver. I know the mayor and others have had conversations with Centennial Airport, too. It's a very complex issue. The FAA does tend to take the side, certainly of aviation, as, as was noted, that, that is their objective. But, you know, I do think you can continue, you can do, you know, you can continue your advocacy without being a part of the roundtable, and you can certainly engage in advocacy by continuing to be a part of the roundtable. But, you know, do it separately from that also. Those are some things I, you know, look at as possibilities for the city of Westminster.
A follow-up on that. I think some of it is, some of the issues are certainly around hours of operation and just their training activity, like, flights that are coming in with either freight or passengers. So.
School.
Do, yeah, do we have any leeway with that? So even at school facility, like, we can't?
It's all up to the FAA. They're, they're in charge. Much like Rocky Flats. We sit there and we talk, we advocate, but ultimately, we're not in any kind of control.
We got a panel this week where, I don't know how they got it. It was interesting. They showed how many times the same area of the plane up over their head went around them for flight school, and they just questioned, why does it have to be round and round and round and round? So those are the things in the community that they're frustrated with. And, and then we have the people right on the runway that just want sampling of the ground out there at the approach of that runway. And to me, it would be, I have no idea what it costs, but why? But it can't, you know, nobody wants to touch it.
Yeah. And Mayor, it was nice to talk to the Carter's Believe. Thanks for taking a moment. And you mentioned that. Certainly on that issue, I mean, I guess, not knowing, you know, as much about this as others in the room, particularly on trying to do a study or assessment there of that property. I mean, I guess I'd like to know by the airport would or would not want to do that. And, and if, you know, there is a possibility to seek funding for it and support the airport in seeking funding to do that through the FAA, you know, I like to think that there's, there's an avenue to advocate for funding to do something like that. And it would be helpful to have the airport's support to go ahead and do that, if you could, you know, try to pursue something of that nature.
Hey, Mike. Do you think it would be smart to stay in, sort of, if there are opportunities like that, for example, in this next year before the rates go up, to lobby or to get the airport, to convince the airport of some of these things? Would it be smarter to, for us to stay in and then work with, you know, you or, or a federal, maybe a congressman or someone like that, to push for funding so that we have the support of the airport with that? Or would that not matter, and we can just go straight to Congress for that?
Question, and thank you for it. Number one, certainly our firm and our capacities, being your federal advocate, will support you on this issue in any fashion that you think makes the most sense. And certainly advocating with our delegation and with the FAA, we're very glad to do that. Number two, I didn't know until I heard it in the meeting tonight that you've only been a part of the roundtable for a year, correct?
18 months.
Okay. So, I mean, I, I think it, it would be prudent to remain a part of the group. I mean, I don't think, I mean, I think if you had been part of this group for 10 years, and you were sitting with the issues you are now, that would be frustrating, and I don't know the value of doing it if you'd been there that long. But I think it's still early in the effort to try to get people to collaborate and find cooperative solutions. I mean, and, and if you're able to stay in at the affordable rate that you've been in, I think that's looking doing. And I, you know, and I think trying to be really clear with the group, here's what we got to get out of this by this time next year, which is. Which is, you know, plan to move forward. It sounds like a mayor certainly trying to get this study off the ground, which, you know, may go to some extent in, in helping people feel a little more comfortable about things. And, and as I said, we're, we're glad to support you separately in what we do as an advocate for you on the federal level. So I kind of go by the old adage of, you know, you know, if you're not at the table, you're, you're, you're dinner. And, and I'd hate to think that, you know, you're not sitting at the table. And in some ways that might penalize you a little more and, and I wouldn't want to see that.
Just have to raise that when this whole, they wanted the person that made the motion for the increase in price next year. They made it crystal clear either that, because now it's in the bylaws, you need to pay it or you're out. I did not take the threat well and I said, it works both ways. You don't also get the money. So that's where we left it last time I attended and my first time to attend.
Yeah. Well, again, and we, we want to support you in our capacity, working one-on-one with Westminster. And, and I think if we can delineate what you'd like to accomplish separately from the group, we definitely want to pursue that. And if it entails trying to find funding that would help look at it as a property or advocacy with our delegation, the FAA. Those are things that we can certainly. Again, a complex issue and you talked with Centennial Airport and, and you can talk, you know, with your, your colleagues in Adams County. It, it is challenging to find change quickly on this issue in a positive way. It, it really is. And I live, I live by Sloane's Lake and I've lived here all my life and 26th Avenue, which is where I was for the first 10 years of my life. Lived near, that was lined up with the runway at Stapleton. And as my mother, even tonight, when I was on the phone with her, we used to, she used to see the pilots in the planes. And I remember how. And it is very scary at times too. And so I certainly sympathize with the people you represent that are close to that airport and want to be in a position to support whatever direction you want to go.
Other comments?
Like I mentioned, I, I think we should, you know, if a seat at the table is worth something for this year and we don't see that, I'd, I'd be in favor of that. But I don't, I don't want to be disingenuous because we got into this because we heard from residents and their biggest concern at that time was the noise. And, and not of the regular schedule one, it's the flight school. And, and I, I live under the path. It's just. But some people have found it to be more than that. And, but it, it's disingenuous for us too to say, we're, we're members of our MMA and we're fighting for you. And we really can't. I mean, that's not fair to say to people either. So that, that's my concern from that standpoint.
Would agree with Counselor Seymour. If it was at the same rate, fine. And I do understand the whole seat, what your seat at the table is giving you strong-armed into in the additional nine thousand dollars. I don't feel like that is really helpful. I too live right under it and I have my entire life. My folks live half mile from I, from me. So I, and I understand there's varying degrees in our neighborhood. There's some folks like me who I'm just used to it, like I, you know, I grew up around it. And some folks who don't like it. But to your point of being disingenuous, I would far rather spend our efforts on going after things that we know we can potentially affect. Because there are areas they allow you to object, such as the things you brought up that they don't talk about at the group. I'd rather spend our efforts at that because I feel like we could explain that to our residents that, hey, we're going to separately do this. We're not giving up. We're just, you know, not participating in. Unless they want to let us participate at the same level and then they can.
I mean, I'd stay another year. I share the cynicism, you know, or slash experience of Mayor Protam, right? Yeah, yeah. Internally, some conversations where we're just talking individually with the airport, just seeing, you know, let's just, if was to, you know, as one of them is to get that lead analyzed. Let's just kind of, you know, make 32 meetings with the airport until they say yes. Yeah, that's where I'd be for the next year.
I agree. I think we should stay one more year and use the great Mike Dino. It's helpful if Congress people. The airport, if we pull out now, there will be some bad, bad. And the airport, and we, we still have residents to serve. So we want to bring them along the ride to actually get the checks. If we have to force them via Congress, that might be a better option. But we, we will still need them to say yes to that, to whatever Dino can do. I would say one more year and we.
I would leave now. Start higher rates if it's in their bylaws.
Twenty twenty-two to next June, twenty twenty-three, three thousand, whatever it is. The new one starts next June is the big.
So in other words, what we're really talking about is we go from June of this year to June of next year and what that rate's going to be.
Rate in thirty-four hundred?
Thirty-six hundred.
From all I've heard of this, and from what I've heard of the interactions of a representative, I don't even think we've got thirty-six hundred dollars worth. So us, so my would be to end it now. I mean, none of the participants are going anywhere. And if they actually do something different or decent or make any progress, we could always rejoin. But I tend to agree with Counselor Seymour that we're just putting unreasonable expectations in the minds of our residents. And there's no, we shouldn't do that.
I'm going to say we should not spend it for this year either. We'll see what happens. You can always join when they move forward.
Are we able to join anytime in the year?
We bring our money. I don't think they'll turn it down.
That's a true statement though. We can join whenever we want.
I, I'd have to look particularly. Join at the permission of the group. They were not an original member. So there are some stipulations to allow that. Based on Lafayette being allowed in back in February by a vote of the group as a voting member.
So we have to get voted in.
They had to vote to allow them and yes.
They weren't part of the original group. I wasn't at that meeting. Voted to allow them because they wanted to be part. There was nobody who was like, take your ball and go home. You can't play. So I, that would be an interesting development. They told us, no, if we tried to come back, but I've seen stranger.
So is it possible then that we could actually go this route? See if we get something tangible and then join and say, hey, hey guys, that was losing for you. Can we join back and bring you along? Or we may not even need to join, right? We can just ask them, the airport, sign on to our plan. Okay, I agree with that.
So we have, we're not going to re. So we won't be going to the July 11th. Anything else we need to do around that or?
There is a withdrawal piece in the intergovernmental agreement. So we as staff can bring that back to you for what we need to do to effect withdrawal.
Thank you. What is next on our agenda? Thanks, Mr. Dino.
Have a good evening. Take care. Have a happy fourth also.
The rodeo market.
So we have Stephanie Troller and Lindsey Kimble. And we have a presentation up.
Welcome. Good evening.
And if I can just add one more piece.
Yep.
According to the bylaws. Resignations, a member of any committee may resign at any time by giving written notice to the chair of the committee and the chair of the roundtable in Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. And such resignation shall take effect at the time specified therein. And the acceptance of such resignation shall not be necessary to make it effective. So we just say.
We have to get 30 or?
Yeah, we just say thanks.
The big thing is so that we red tag to whoever's paying the bills that this year's dues don't go.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Protam and Counselors, Lindsey Kimble, Director of Economic Development. Just want to provide a quick overview and I will turn it over to Stephanie Troller, our economic presenting manager, who will go through our survey results of the rodeo market and the community's feelings on that. I just want to start by a little, little bit of place setting. Since 2004, the city has worked to restore and find valuable end user for the building. And we know that there's a strong desire in the community to put this historic asset to an active use. And it's also complementary to the surrounding community and businesses. So as a result, we have gone ahead and conducted this survey to get that community input. It's important to note as Stephanie goes through the information that we were able to run cross tabs. So we did ask the question, are you a resident of historic Westminster in Harris Park or not? So we, we have done that and divvied up the data that way. So I thought that was an important point to note. As well, you know, we have many, many paths that you could choose on this journey. Each one will have a unique cost, a timeline and a risk in all, as in all things. The survey, we didn't venture into those dimensions of, of timing and cost and risk in great detail. But that was by design because we wanted to know what was important to the community and what their values were. That's what we wanted to react to. So the information that we're going to share with you is not encumbered with costs or risks or time. But we do think it was important as that shapes the future conversations and the future of this very important asset to the community. So with that, I will turn it over to Stephanie.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protam Council. I'm Stephanie Troller. Can I have the next slide, please? So I'm going to ask the mayor to keep me honest on the history on the rodeo market. But I do want to give the folks that are listening in and to council who are not aware, kind of a, a, a really quick timeline of the history of, of the property. So.
Dino stayed, he should have been the one to give it.
Agreed, agreed. So speaking of Dino, the Valenti family bought the property in 1953 and they operated it as the city's first supermarket. And it operated that way till 1971 where the Valenti family moved over to where they are now. There are, you could see there that picture. This was definitely the place to be. You know, lots of family, family and community gatherings. From 1971.
It's a really good story.
Drink water. Okay, sorry.
Are you okay, Counselor Demola? All right. Thank you for the thumbs up. From 1971 to about 2004, it was operated as an office building. They really made modifications to the building. And when we purchased the building in 2004, we tried very hard to undo those modifications and restore it to what, what you see today. It's all two years later, Counselor, excuse me, Mayor McNally probably remembers, Vicki Bunson worked to get this property on the local historic landmark. And then from 2009 to 2018, it was leased to Southwest Westminster Arts Group, also known as SWAG. There was another study was to use this property and connect it to the Grange to really form kind of an art center. That, that deal fell apart for, for numerous reasons. And SWAG continued to operate until 2018. The group started to dissolve a little bit. And in 2018, the property came to economic development. We had a developer who wanted, who had approached us to develop the Old Westminster Pub and Tavern. We, I specifically went to counsel at the time, received direction to pursue that deal. And it was going great and then the pandemic hit. And there was a lot of concerns about whether or not the restaurant industry would be successful. So we paused the project and then at the end decided to terminate it because at the time, there were still concerns over what COVID. The impacts COVID caused to the restaurant industry and also on supply chain, not just for the restaurant, but also for construction. And that brings us to this point. Next slide, please. So, you know, we often get questions on the condition of the property. I've walked the property several times with the chief building official and facilities managers. And I will assure you, the property is stable. It is not ready for human occupancy, however, there's asbestos. There was a, some pipes froze and flooded, so there's some cut lines in the drywall. It, it, the systems have not been updated since the 50s. The last known updates were in 2009 when we received a, a grant from the state historic landmark. Also to note here, when we were pursuing the Old Westminster Pub and Tavern, we did get cost estimates of what that would look like. Pre-pandemic to get this building up to code where it's just, just north of $2 million. It does have local and state landmarks. There is a historic preservation easement on it. So whatever we do to the property, we need to get approval from both the local landmark board and the state historic fund. Specifically if we touch the money that they invested in, which is the barrel roof and then the facade of the property. Is Counselor Demola?
Was, I'm assuming this project could have historic tax credits as part of it?
Possibly, yeah. I mean, I don't think the city has ever pursued it, but if we were to seek development, that is an aspect, we could investigate that option.
I would definitely do that.
All right, next slide. So as Lindsey alluded, and I think Counselor Izadi will remember and several other counselors and city manager. It was really important for staff to engage with the community. There are a lot of, there's a lot of history in this particular property. And there's a lot of emotions with this property. And we know, I know very well, I hear from numerous residents, they want to see something happen. So after the Old Westminster Pub and Tavern failed, wanted to engage the community. And really, you know, if you talk to any two residents, they will probably give you two different opinions on what's the most important thing that they see, generally speaking. So we wanted to, to measure the values they felt were important for this property, their uses, their concerns. We did, conducted an online survey via Survey Monkey. It was open in April. It was advertised on social media, website, email, conversations with residents as well. Received over 2,000, 200, excuse me, 200 responses. And we know very well that residents in Harris Park and Historic Westminster are sensitive to people influencing decisions, planning decisions that live outside of the area. So 40%, 44% of the respondents lived in the area. But it's also important to note that if we, whatever we decide to do, if it has a retail or some sort of sales component, it's going to need, likely need a larger trade area to support the business as well. Which is why we wanted to gauge whether or not they lived in Historic Westminster. At the request of a resident, we did add the zip code question, but it, it was a little late. So we kind of null that result. And let's walk through those right now. Next slide, please. So on the values, and I can barely see this, so I'm going to have to look at my, the one downstairs. Sorry for those of you who cannot see that very well. I'll do my best.
Well, you have a birthday tomorrow. You're getting old.
I don't have a birthday, Mayor.
Oh, it does.
Oh, okay.
Tomorrow.
Happy birthday, councillor Izadi. I'm sure you're 29.
So so we certainly wanted to, you know, based on some of the conversations we've had with residents during the old Westminster Pub and Tavern, throughout the process that we've been working on trying to get something into this, we designed the survey to ask what, what the value should be assigned. The cost to renovate the building, the type of in-use historic preservation, cost of incentives to attract a business, and then the compatibility with the area. You know, you could see for yourselves, but the dark, biggest dark blue is definitely the type of in-use, followed by historic preservation and compatibility. However, the cost of incentives really did not come back as, it was somewhat important. It wasn't a huge, I would say a huge deal breaker for the people who've completed the survey. Any questions on this one before I move to the next? All right, next slide, please. Oh, yes, councillor Baker.
Why would any of the survey of the respondents care about the price?
Well, I had heard.
I mean, if they're not paying for it.
Well, sir, that's a very good point. And that's actually why I wanted to be real clear at the beginning. They weren't encumbered with these issues that we are. Yes, sir.
We've, when the old Westminster Pub deal came together, we did hear significant comments about, you know, the renovation price. So there's from the general public, not just historic Westminster residents.
I would caveat, though, that we, in my opinion, didn't do a great job of letting people know that that was cost that, in my mind, I mean, those were costs of upgrading a building that we're responsible for because we own the building. A lot of people took from the deal that the money being spent was an incentive to the business. And the reality is, is those improvements still need to happen. A lot of those improvements still need to happen to that building. The one being the most costly, if I recall, is the roof. And that's still a building that has historic money tied to it, and we're still responsible for it. And so a lot of residents didn't, they didn't understand the delineation between the incentives and what we're responsible for.
Thank you for that clarification. We'll try to do better.
Communication, communication, communication.
Yeah, noted. So type of in-use, right? So you could see here, we, this is where we kind of aggregated the data Harris Park Historic Westminster residents versus kind of the all respondents. 85% of historic Westminster and Harris Park residents said the type of in-use was very important or important. Likewise, with, with just kind of the all responses, it was, it was, it was probably the biggest response. Can I get the next slide, please? So what do, what do the residents want to see? I would say largely, and this is, again, this is the aggregate, the next slide will break it out based on Harris Park residents, historic Westminster residents versus kind of the all respondents. Restaurant was 57%. They still are in support of a restaurant. Second place is something for the arts, kind of ill-defined at this point. What they don't want to see is office space. They don't feel that that's going to be, really help activate the street. So can I have the next slide? We'll see the breakout. Yes, sir.
What about other uses? So was there like a write-in?
There was a write-in, and all the comments are part of your packet. I wanted to submit them for public, for public comment. All of the questions had, you know, we had some categories. It was all on a Likert scale for us, you know, wannabe data, wannabes. That's the way you, you scale things from one to five or one to 10 on a likability. But we also realized that we, there might have been a use out there that we didn't consider, and we wanted to capture any input. So that is part of the agenda memo, and you can certainly reference it.
Another question? Oh, sorry, I missed this one.
That's okay. All right, so here you could see on this, the all respondents versus the historic Westminster and specifically Harris Park, what they would like to see. 85% of historic and historic Westminster and Harris Park residents said they would love to see, love or would like to see a restaurant as the in-juice. All responses also came in pretty strong as well, and you could see those results in the dark blue and the red. So I would say majority are very much in favor of some sort of restaurant. Can I see the next slide, please? We also, as I mentioned earlier, really wanted to make sure we understood potential impacts and concerns of the residents through the old Westminster Pub project. We certainly heard some, and councillor Seymour's point, kind of general public concerns. And they're highlighted there. 54% felt that the wrong type of the in-juice would be very impactful negatively. 31, excuse me, 37 are, were concerned about noise. Parking was a concern, and traffic was also a concern. It would've been along 73rd. There's just not a ton of parking. We did conduct a parking survey. It was in COVID, so we'd probably need to revisit that once, if we determine an in-juice. But between on-street parking and neighbors walking, the study at the time felt that there was enough to park, so we could certainly update that with non-COVID times. Next, next slide, please. So with that, I really would like to seek councillor's feedback and direction on what you would like to see for this location. Based on the survey results, majority of the community does support some sort of restaurant concept. And depending on the thumbs up, thumbs down vote that you provide today, will determine the next steps on, you know, updating cost estimates and going out for RFP. We'll have to map out a process. So with that, last, I'm available for questions.
So this is, like you said, it's probably the most sensitive topic besides water that I experienced throughout the campaign. There are, so my feedback is going to be what I've heard the most of. And that would be if it's a restaurant, not a pub, the distance, the proximity of serving alcohol or a bar, ask, or bar type of building so near to a church is, is very much not wanted. And a lot of people want a youth center, so some kind of youth center there. Those are the two I've heard the most. And then grocery. But from your surveys, it seems like it's restaurant or grocery, right? So I would say.
Space for the arts, but yes.
Yeah, a youth program or youth center is very much wanted there.
And sir, if I could add on to those thoughts and just give a little more flavor. Also, what we want to discuss with you today is about those groundings and reality. So a restaurant was by far, you saw the majority would like a restaurant there. But at the same time, the possibility of finding a restaurant who could be successful in that location and not serve alcohol, which is also what, you know, you're hearing from the community, that might be challenging because a lot of their models are, a lot of their profit comes from that. So I think we'd also like to, maybe there's an interim step here where we could explore viability of the different options that we've heard from the community. And as Stephanie said, that was obviously restaurant. Number two, space for the arts. And also, I think it encompasses that youth center that I hear you speaking of. So also in those open comments, there was a lot of, a lot of, a lot of comments reflecting, we need a place for folks to go to take our classes, maybe learn some, have a little place where folks can sell their art and maybe learn some entrepreneurship opportunities and have some classes. And, you know, so there's those kinds of thoughts that we heard that are very good. So like I said, I know it's not giving you a solid answer about what it is, but I think that it's, it's these facts that we've uncovered lead to more questions that I think are really good, that then we can take and make a next step of helping flesh out what maybe these options are. And then, like I said, understanding the costs, the likelihood of success, and the timing.
Yeah, yeah, I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
It is some, you know, almost restaurants, they're alcohol, right? But a pub is very, is very specific, right? It's very different than any restaurant that serves alcohol. It's a bar that serves food, right?
Sometimes very little food.
Right. So, so I would say that if it is that kind of concept, heavy, heavy communication, that, you know, that kind of educating the community on what this really is versus just saying, we're going to put a pub in there. Because that pub concept, just don't call it a pub, Tim. Bad name.
First and foremost, you kind of alluded to it, the market. I mean, somebody, you have to have somebody who wants to do it. Government's not going to, we're not going to open a restaurant. Nor would I sign up for us to do that. So whether or not the city has a use for it or not, or if we have some sort of programming, like I would look to staff to say, here's viable programming that we actually need that we don't have another space for in that area. But at the end of the day, when, when I was behind the fact that we had somebody who was willing to do this, and to me, if you look at areas that have vibrant art districts, another component of a vibrant art district is somewhere to go eat and potentially have a drink. You go up to cities, the one that I brought up before that always comes to mind to me is Vale Village. Lots of little art galleries and such up there. But you usually go eat and then you go walk through the village. And so I think it would be, you know, an activator kind of thing, and that's why I was behind it. You had somebody who was willing to do it. When that fell apart, one of the points that I really have continued to hammer is, and I alluded to it earlier, earlier, is this is still our building. We're still responsible to fix it. And I think we need to figure out what things that we actually have to do with that building to make it a safe building and take care of it. We can't watch it fall into disrepair after we've already, as a city, made commitments to being historically preserved. As far as opening, I mean, I don't know if you have options where you open it up to the market and say, hey, here's this building. I don't know how you attracted the last potential tenant. I'll leave those, those things up to you. But I do think if you, what the community has said, since I first ran in 2013, there's been a concept of, we want this to be an art district. And there are multiple components besides just art in order to have a true art district in my mind.
Mr. councillor Baker?
Let me translate for you what I heard. That we own a white elephant. Okay? And my understanding of a white elephant is this is something an Indian prince would give to another Indian prince who he didn't like. Because a white elephant can't do any work, and it just eats and eats and eats and eats. So we have a white elephant. It's got a historic landmark designation to it. And we've obviously taken other people's money on this thing, so we're stuck in this, aren't we?
The historic preservation easement expires, I believe, in eight more years.
Okay. And if I was reading the material correctly, just to do the kinds of things Mayor Protem talked about, is over $1 million?
About $2 million.
That's just to take out the asbestos and fix the roof?
Yes, and put in basic systems that any, any use would need.
What other alternatives do we have? Could we just keep it for the eight years and then unload the white elephant?
Certainly, it would be the pleasure of this board, this body.
It'd be the pleasure of the council. But no, I mean, are there any federal mandates or mandates we got the money from? Are the people who have the historic easement?
No, I, I do think, and maybe because it has such historic relevance to the city, I do believe that there's a lot of sentiment from the community and from residents to keep that building so it doesn't get razed or demoed. So I believe, based on conversations, kind of that general public feedback is that they do desire the city to maintain it and to get it back into productivity. And I would invite city council to, to share what they've heard from residents as well, because I know they hear from it in addition to it.
Well, no, I completely agree that, that buildings need to be used. Absolutely, but, but everything we do is encumbered by cost. Every, we can't say we're going to unencumber it from cost. Everything we do has a cost. And I really am fascinated by the idea of an arts district and stuff like that. But as Mayor Protem said, there's lots of components to make that work. There's lots of hands doing a job to make an art district work, the restaurants. One of my concerns is this is obviously going to be a destination place, right? Where do the people park? There is no parking there right now. Absolutely none. And if you drive by Los Arcos on 80th, I think they have a pretty big parking lot, don't they? And this building is at least the size of Los Arcos, isn't it?
No.
About half of it. So they need half the parking. Okay? Which we don't have any of. So to me, that is another huge challenge to what we do, because a business is not going to go down there unless they have a real strong idea that they're going to succeed. And if they can't get customers to park in a convenient parking lot, can't be two blocks away. I mean, we just put a grocery store in the new downtown. We wanted convenient parking. So.
Noted. Yeah, parking is a concern. Yes, sir.
Okay, and let's other people talk.
Councillor Miller?
So I mentioned the historic tax credit, so definitely let's research what our financing options are. That, I agree that, you know, the alcohol component is key to making a restaurant be able to survive, but, you know, there are a lot of ways to skin that. The, one thing that could be interesting thing to look into is maybe a kitchen incubator or commissary. We're kind of picking up on, you know, local residents and more like a range of sort of cultural representation. You know, we talk about just, you know, so it could provide a rest, you know, there's something in taxi, in the taxi development, for example, that has, it's a restaurant, but it has that commissary component to it. So it has, you can kind of kill two birds with one stone with that. I do love the idea of also integrating in some community space. That could also be a revenue generator for a restaurant or some, you know, whether it's a commissary kind of thing or what. The other thing is, you know, just on the parking thing, I'm just kind of curious. We have Fire Station 1, that giant parking area in the back, or not parking area, but like a large parking lot in the back. I'm just, you know, it's something that the city owns. Is there a portion that could be identified for public parking to accommodate bringing more people into this area is one idea.
We can definitely investigate that. Councillor Seymour?
We, I believe we have the obligation to bring that building up to its historic levels. And for those of you who are not here, I was all in on the old Westminster Pub because we had a local willing participant that was ready to also put their money into it and their reputation as well. So, and here's why. I do not see parking as a problem at all, at all. If we, if you have the right attraction there, I mean, at nighttime, how many people are parked in front of Fireman's Park? At nighttime, how many people are parked in, in front of Ittlebits or the coffee shop or all those were closed? I even had a chat with Mr. Shea about it. What is one of the biggest issues that they have at the Grange right now is their drainage and their asphalt kind of quasi parking lot. The Grange could lease out their parking and end up being able to use that for improvements on the Grange as well. There's all kinds of creative ways to do that, too. If you don't bring in something that, that is, you know, is a vibrant restaurant that will attract people from elsewhere. If you look at, and I don't want this to be the Highlands either, but people figure those things out. People decide, oh, you know, this is from the other end of town. I'm going to Uber there because I don't want to drink and drive. People decide, oh, you know, this is from the other end of town, I'm gonna Uber there cause I don't wanna drink and drive. You don't have parking as a problem. That, that has changed the way that restaurant parking, you know, has done. It's a little issue with Uber right now as far as number of drivers, but, you know, that gig economy will eventually take care of itself when there's that part. So if, if, if we don't activate it in something, in some way, that, that brings people down to the attraction of 73rd so that then the other businesses can be a magnet for that as well. This can be the magnet for the rest of them. They can change their hours, change their concept, then we really just have a nice shell of a building. And while there's, there's all kinds of other things that may be possible use for that, I think we'll be back in the same spot four years after that with an empty thing saying, yeah, we used to have some stuff hanging on the wall and some people came by and saw it. Unless we make something that's economically viable and it all comes down to, you know, the history. Why is Old Town Arvada different than Old Town or Historic Westminster? Liquor, period. Westminster was dry, Arvada was not, they were all over in Old Town. So that's just, that's just the nature of the restaurant business and I speak from a substantial background of experience on that. And it doesn't have to be, you know, liquor forward. The pub is, you know, the old pub, you know, they, these guys, if, if you ever saw one of their other bill, their other restaurant concept, it was all about food, but then, you know, what's the name that attracts people to? So I see these, those are all the secondary things is that if we can find that group that can come in, and yeah, there was incentives for that, for that group too, but i- i- if I was popping a restaurant in there, I would ask for that or more. You know, you don't pay, you don't pay rent for six months when you're popping up a new location.
Would it be helpful to like do a high level, like what the lease structure was for Old Westminster Pub for those of you who may not know?
We could, or, you know, just to give a background, but somebody else knew was gonna come in and go, hey, I need a year free cause it's gonna take me eight months just to get the equipment. Maybe.
Yeah, and just for background, it was a grad, so there was a cost sharing. The city, uh, we had gone through line item on the $2 million. Some of the TI's tenant improvements were going to be paid by, uh, the tenant. We had the bulk share of about 1.2 and then again, the tenant was gonna pay the remainder. And then we had a graduated lease, so the first rent was free and then 25% and then it escalated year by year. And the hope was at the time, and this has been a while since I looked at it, the hope was that after year 10, we would break even on the cost that we had invested. Um, and then start making, and that was just with the specific, uh, very conservative estimates for the restaurant. Um, and that would not include like the additional, like they stopped in a Ittlebits or they stopped in and bought something from Bev or, you know. So there would be additional benefits that we didn't calculate in as well. But that was just, for those of you who may not be familiar, that was the basic deal structure.
Yep, so as you can tell, I've thought about it a lot and I have a very direct opinion on that too, so thank you.
On the remediations, and we do a lot of the remediations, there's still remediation that needs to happen.
There's still, we've done some asbestos remediation, there's still more that needs to be done.
Percentage wise, do we know like what needs to be done versus what has been done?
I think it was, um, I, uh, I'll have to get back to you on the specifics. There was some remediation, I believe they were waiting to do the rest until they had the final design. Um, I believe, um, again, I'll follow up and, and make sure on the asbestos, is that it was, there was still some asbestos left in the drywall. But I, let me double check on that for you.
That's fine. And, uh, Council Seymour and I are very aligned as far as, like, that would have been great. But I think that moving forward to my earlier point of, we can do things to attract something there just by doing the things that we're, we should do as a good property owner. So we are creating an easier, more attractive, um, spot for somebody who may wanna do a restaurant or, or whatever, you know, might go in there. Because the reality is now you have a much higher hurdle because there are things that need to be done to that building, no matter who goes in. So my opinion is we, as a, as a property owner, should take care of those hurdles now. And then you can open it up for, to market and say, hey, here's some different concepts of what could go in there. Let somebody then make the investment out of the free market in order to do something that's gonna help that, that area. Because reality again is those things have to be done, no matter what. And I think that the community would see a lot of goodwill in that if they saw that we just were taking care of property that we purchased. Um, and I think that's been the biggest complaint that I have heard from Historic Westminster in general with the things the city has done along 73rd Ave. Whether it's, uh, the 7225 Bradburn or 73rd and Lowell, it's been simply we bought stuff and then we worked good. So like, you know, let's be a good neighbor, let's take care of our property and then let the market decide what's gonna go in there.
Um, I agree with you, I've heard the same feedback. And I also just want to remind you that every time we touch the building, we will have to go back to both the state and the local and get approval. So, um, I think it's to get to any changes and they could possibly deny, it's, it's, it's a risk that we, we need to explore.
And I, and I understand that and I know that they could, I don't think they're gonna deny us taking care of the property though, which is something that we, as a city, this is why it's so important when we decide that we're gonna be the property owner. Cause then, to, to your point of it continuing to eat money, we bought that problem and we own that problem now. And it would be wrong of us to not take care of that problem. And if that means that the state comes back and says you put money in it, you know what? That should be a lesson for future councils about why, when you make these kind of decisions and you make those kind of designations. We had the same, same thing with 73rd and Lowell. And, and I, I've taken a fair amount of flack for what we did on 73rd and Lowell. And so I'm a little bit passionate about this. It was, money doesn't mean I'm gonna make a bad decision for the community when I think that there's health involved just because we put money in it. So we, you know, if we made decisions that end up costing the taxpayers more money because of decisions made 10 years ago, that doesn't mean I'm gonna make a decision other than what I think is best. And what's best is taking care of property we are.
Thank you, sir, for those comments. If I could just add on, um, you know, I, I, I hear you saying, and, and what a lot of property owners do in this situation when they're faced with historic structures is, you know, we call it creating the shell. So we need as prop, as a property owner, thinking like a private sector property owner, we would prepare that and do as much as we can and as much due diligence to suit any of these potential end users. So that's what I hear you saying and we can definitely do that and, and start to work on that.
A hundred percent. Let me give you an example, the, um, I work for a company that is a holding company of franchises. One of the franchises we own is Woodhouse Day Spas. Woodhouse Day Spas in their early days, their concept largely was finding, uh, Victorian houses. And that's where a lot of the original spas, even the ones in Colorado are in beautiful old homes, which I'm sure at some point you look at the cost of that and, you know, is that, is that worth it? But that's what, you know, a lot of the early on spas were, so I under, you know. But if you go out and look at them, if I sit and find one Victorian home that's already done some of this stuff and they've upgraded the electric and done some of this stuff, that's gonna be the one I go after versus one that, you know, is in its original state, probably not gonna go for that one. So I totally, you're hearing me loud and clear.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. And to take it a step further, um, we could even be a little bit more proactive and we could get some potential a cost estimates for, for the, the different uses. So you even take out some of that uncertainty for them and you're able to hand them a document that's been done by professional engineers and designers. And say this, now, of course, they're gonna go and have their own people do it again, but I've found that that provides them with a level of greater certainty and it shows that we're serious.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent. And I think that Ms. Troller had a great idea that you've already invented some of this. So you have some of those use cases to some extent already coming out. But I, and I, one other point I wanna hit on is the parking. I'm kind of probably in between both of you. Like I, I think that it'll, it'll figure itself out. I think that if there are opportunities for, for more lots, and I've brought up some of them in the past, I know that we did some stuff with 7225 or the, the Community Garden. You know, there's some potential opportunity that might even mesh well with some of the community ideas on 73rd and Lowell where some sort of lot that could both be parking and potentially, uh, an activating part to do events. Um, there's a lot of different ways that we could skin that, but I think that we should at least try to figure out how we encompass that if we have opportunities for parking. Um, but I do think that that area will figure it out, just like we've seen in, in downtown Golden, Old Town Arvada. People do figure it out and, you know, parking in both of those places isn't the easiest, but people still go there and it's still, you know, places that people wanna be.
Councilor Nammela?
Just on that parking note, you, you know, it, yes, people figure it out, but it's also good to be able to identify. And I'm sure maybe in the Harris Parkland, which I have not gone through in detail to look at, if you've already identified parking opportunities, but maybe you have already, so, um, because there are communities that have, are suffering from their success of, you know, um, uh, the only other thing I would say is just with respect to doing the tenant finish or at least doing that white box shell, um, you know, to, uh, Ms. Troller's, uh, uh, point of having to go through a process with our state and, you know, I don't know if it's national as well, but.
Uh, state and local.
Yeah, same, it, um, going through that process is, I'm intensive, staff intensive. And then, so you wanna make sure that whatever we're doing is flexible enough, um, to accommodate. But I'm, I'm assuming you still have to come in with those final tenant finishes and go for a second time. Now, that's just a, just something to think about is, you know, cause I, yes, I'm, ideally we would have a, a white box to be able to show people, but um, there's that, that regulation, um, that passed.
Councilor Sadi?
What was the original purchase price? How much cash have we invested into the building in its lifetime and what's the current valuation?
Those are great questions. Um, current evaluation, I don't have, I'm going on memory, so, um, I'll double check the figures and get back to you. I believe the original purchase price was around 400.
Four eighty-five.
Pardon?
Four eighty-five.
Thank you, four eighty-five. And I believe the, the, the investments we made have, again, has it happened since 2009 when we took the grant? And I believe it was a $50,000 matching grant, 25, $50,000 grant. And that, that money went to improve, restore the facade. Again, there was an office building in there, so they, um, they kind of boarded up the front and then, and so it did, or stuccoed the front. And, um, again, took, uh, the vault, the, the barrel roof, went, some of the funds went to restore that. Other than that, there has not been any major investment in the property.
So you'll get back on the current valuation?
Yeah.
And the, the number, the, the rehab, the, the $2 million estimate, the pre-pandemic estimate of 2 million? I'm guessing that's closer now to three.
I would, I would say 10 to 15% cost escalates, escalates over each year would be conservative. So, yeah, you're getting closer to, you're getting closer to three. Um, and we all know, if I, you know, finding trades and services is also challenging right now too. So, um, it, it does help that it's the city and we're good for our money. Um, but we'd have to go for a budget process as well to, to secure the rest of the funds needed to, to make that renovation possible.
And that would be in this upcoming budget process?
I've ma, I've made a preliminary request.
Yeah, I'd be curious to know specifically what we're de-prioritizing to prioritize that 3 million when we get to that.
Yeah.
Point. Three million is a lot, but it's important to take care of what we own. Just the visibility, I think, will be important for the public to know. And that current valuation, I think, I'm curious about that.
And sir, if I could add on to your thoughts there, um, the way that the past deal was structured with the pub was, part of the incentive was the city was paying for that TI or tenant improvement specific, specific to that end user. So that was 800,000 almost of the $2 million that was estimated for those total improvements. So I, I would just say there's many ways to skin a cat, as, as we've said tonight. So I think, you know, if, if it's the cost of the city to perform those types of improvements, maybe the end user that we find is, um, well enough financed that perhaps their incentive comes on the backend in the out years. And that's where they, um, are given their incentive versus upfront with the city forking out our money to, to do those improvements. They maybe take the risk of doing the improvements and then they see that benefit in the out years.
Yeah, yeah, it seems that maybe we can do the most critical items.
Yes.
Right? Because we shouldn't do the whole thing if we, if there's risk of not even getting a tenant.
Correct.
So that'll be doing.
Yes.
And it, and it's, it's pretty risky, I would say all of it to make, I mean, there, there, I wouldn't know, let me back this up. So I, I, I'm not sure I have clarity and I wanna make sure I, I'm hearing you guys and I'm understanding you guys. So what I'm hearing from you is you would like for staff to improve the building at least to kind of that white box and then, and then find an in-user?
Let's stop there and check that.
I would not, I would wait because, you know, I, I'd wanna see what kind of deal you could get with a new user. That might mean that you're, there's, um, as Kimball has, uh, mentioned, you know, there may be some other financing options or, you know, so that we're not in at 2 million upfront or whatever. Um, and then, and, and I'm also just reticent regarding process. So I'd give it a little bit of time to go out and see what you can get to get the whole deal done at one time. That's mine. And to make it as minimal, uh, in terms of an investment on the city as possible and, and to research funding options and then come back and sell it.
Use a term I've heard all too often over the last four years, would not kick the can on our responsibilities. And I would take care of the property that the council purchased and it belongs to the city. And to the point, the longer you wait, the more it's gonna cost for us to fix it.
So you would say go ahead and do whatever.
I would white box it, let's fix what is our responsibility and get it up to code and, or, or make a decision that that building's not worth being there. I mean, and I don't think that that's what the community would like too much. So I would take care of our responsibility and fix it up to code.
Council Seymour?
I, I'm concerned of the start and stop cost on that in that if we, if we, if we bring it up and then we, you know, we, we have a, a different tenant in mind. I mean, some of those things like the roof, that won't, that won't change. But I, I, I'm concerned is that, that the cost would be substantially higher to go in and do what we need to do now because it's not gonna fall down right now. It's just not inhabitable. And, and my concern would be it would add substantially to the cost for us to do that, that in two, maybe even three steps. So I, I would, I would say sit on it for now.
Council Baker?
Everything has a lifespan to it. Unless we design it to be perpetually renewed and fixed. Like we're maybe gonna build a water plant that we can perpetually renew and fix. That's a goal. In this building, it's a wood stick building, built in 1952. It's coming pretty near the end of its life. As I've seen the commercial word of world of restaurants and grocery stores, they live a, or malls, they live a life, then they're done. You know, hopefully the investors got their money back in the depreciation and the profit they made. So I think before, and I completely agree with, we have an obligation to take care of our property. But we need to decide, is this gonna be a forever property? Or is this property near the end of its life? And, and time takes its toll. So I, so I'm more with Councilor Seymour that I wouldn't do any, or, and Councilor Nermel, I wouldn't do anything right now. I would, I would make a decision as to what we wanna do ultimately with the building. Okay, because different users have different things.
Councilor Sadi?
In the real estate world, bringing a house up to, or a building like this up to a really, really good condition may, might help in attracting a tenant, for example. Yeah, but it's very known, it's a known thing in the industry that you're not gonna go find the building that's exactly what you need from a code standpoint, there's gonna be some rehab involved. And most tenants may actually seek those buildings that need rehab because they can get a better deal out of whoever's selling it, like us, right? So I would say that if we can bring the building, fix the most critical element so it's safe for the community that's surrounding it, but not go all the way because there's, there's gonna be negotiations. And if we can shift the cost to the tenant in any way we can, we should look into that. So I'm kind of in between and saying do the most critical pieces, maybe the roof and wait for the rest.
I just asked that if you are. I just ask that if you are considering that, that, you know, we understand what we need to do in terms of the historic component, like if, even if fixing the roof is going to trigger process and then we have to go through two processes, that would make me less excited to do it in stages. So, and the other thing with respect to a restaurant, we know they're just coming in with numbers. They're, you know, and our, our best argument is how many people can we get there? You know, like what kind of revenues can they expect? So hopefully they would look past.
Might I make a recommendation? Because I'm, I'm not sure I have clarity on what you want me to do yet.
Hang on one second. Did you, something?
I just want to make a point that I'm not advocating that we do anything more than the safety things that make the building unhappable, which is really the biggest thing because the, they're not messing with the drywall. You don't really have to abate the drywall because it, it was inhabitable before. It's the, the roof that I'm concerned with, which also if you don't take care of that, you could potentially have a building that's going to be not usable because the roof does have to be taken care of. So I don't disagree. Let's not do things that aren't needed because it could change depending on the use. But the roof isn't going to change. I mean, you're not going to be able to change that much of the, the structure of that building. I do want to at least point out that it's, it's actually a concrete building and I think metal trussels in it. So it's actually a pretty solid old building. And if properly cared for, those kind of buildings last a very, very long time. So a little partial, my family has a restaurant that's been in the same place since, since the 60s. And I don't think it's going anywhere for another 60 years. At least I hope not. So if it's properly maintained and taken care of, I think that that building's going to be there. The other component that I'd like us to at least think about, it's next to buildings that are older than it. And I mean, there's a character of that, that street and that is part of the character of that street.
Would, would you be open to staff looking at what it would, you know, just understanding what are the implications of? Like if we, even if we have to replace or fix the roof, like what does that mean for us process wise? But I'm also really curious to know if there's money that can be saved in one false swoop with, you know, like, yeah, if we're, if we have a whole package of, you know, it's, you know, the efficiency of having, you know, a contractor in there at one time doing things. And then the second piece is if it's funded through tax credits or some other sources, like does that help?
Yeah, I, I want to give direction to have them go figure it out and come back with costs and the smartest way to do it. Like I'm not saying bend away. I'm saying this needs to get taken care of. And I feel that this council has the responsibility to take care of the property. And you come back and say what makes sense right now. That takes care of the things that that building structurally needs taken care of so people can be inside it. And then we, you know, the rest of it can work itself out because there are good opportunity, depending on who wants to use it, where maybe we can offset some of the cost of the tenant finish, which is no different than any other building owner. When they have something that's ready for tenant finish, you, I'm sure even in your business, you, you had some sort of per diem that you said, okay, here's what I want done and you split the cost with the building owner. And that's pretty standard. I don't like government being that, that building owner, but we are the building owner. So, but I think we're, you know, in the same spot. I just want to take care of the things about the building that if we don't take care of them, that this repair is going to just get worse.
My concern with everything everybody has said is I know the water pipes have burst once. Do we have that fixed?
The water is currently turned off. We do a test every, every so often, but the water is turned off so we, it doesn't flood or freeze again. But the minimal repairs were done at that time.
Right. My biggest concern too is roof is next. I mean, if, if something happens there and destroys the inside, we haven't done anything for the community. So I think I'm hearing everybody truly, while they say they're on different sides, I hear them saying the same things. We need more information to make a good decision. We need to know the processes, what's involved, and then come back to us on this piece.
So what I would recommend is the following, and you guys can direct the yes or no. I, I do think we could go out to an RFQ, request for qualifications to see what is out there. And I also wanted to remind council that the barrel roof is one of the protected building components with the state and the local. So every time we do touch the roof, we are going to trigger that double process. It's fine. I just want you guys to make sure, I, I make sure that, that, that's clear that the barrel roof is one of the, the items that the, the state historic fund is concerned about.
But if it's not in 100% shape, what shape is it in? How long can it go unattended? And what do we need to do to make sure it stays in? I, I mean, if we don't have a roof, we lose, to me, we lose everything inside.
Absolutely. And in historic preservation, you know, we call that sealing the envelope. So the most important thing that you want to do with these structures, and I think that's where we are now, we have to maintain the seal on the envelope. So that's the roof, any entrances, windows, you know, any sort of structural problem that would allow the elements to come in. So I think this has been great. We've got a lot of good feedback and I appreciate this conversation. And I think what we are going to work on is bringing back some cost estimates on those critical components for keeping the envelope sealed. And maybe there are some other items that we can also present for your consideration that would also help with this sort of shell concept of the inside of things we'd have to do for anybody. And we can bring back timing and process and in addition, understanding the lifespan left on that roof and the condition is what I've heard you say as well.
And I know the heating and plumbing at the end has been generous about letting us use that when we have all of our activities down on 73rd because they're usually closed during that time something's going on. Same with Burtonelli Dentists. So we have pockets of parking. You can't always count on the church because they have weddings, they have funerals, they have youth events, they have their own thing going on. So you just can't count on them. But we happen to have over 800 people down there for a block party and they all got there somehow and found their way to the events. So we can make it happen. Anything else you need?
Uh, no, I think that's a lot of work in front of me. So I appreciate your direction. And, you know, we, we will, I'll probably just, we'll get back to you when I have something.
He didn't give you a timeline.
I don't know.
Right before.
Thank you.
Thank you. We need a break. I need a drink. I know. This rolling. Okay, continuing. We have graffiti before us. I can't wait. Welcome.
Chief Palmer?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Counselors Norman Hubbard and I'm Chief of Police. I brought some friends with me tonight to talk about the graffiti ordinance overview and update. With me tonight is Gary Pettigo. He's a graffiti, graffiti specialist. His supervisor, Commander Tim Reed, from the prosecutor's office, Brian Fusile, and then from community development, Eric Otzelberger. And then we also are joined by Judge Lawntine to also talk about some of the overview there from the court's perspective. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Gary to start off the graffiti presentation.
I think I should go start with me, if that's okay?
Sure.
Welcome anyway.
Good evening, everyone. What I thought I'd do is start off this presentation with just a general overview of our graffiti code. So you understand what it says and what tools we have to work with to deal with graffiti. So essentially what I'm going to do is touch on the two most commonly charged graffiti code sections into our municipal court. I'll also touch on some code sections that we see very rarely charged or almost never charged and, and kind of give you some thoughts on what that means or why that might be. So essentially, the two code sections that are most frequently charged, we will call defacement, which is the act of doing graffiti and possession of graffiti materials. Those are the vast majority of charges we see in our municipal courts. The kind of, the, the distant number three would be possession of graffiti materials by a juvenile. We do see that charge. It's not uncommon or surprising when we see it. But the, but defacement and possession of graffiti materials make up the vast majority of charges we see in our municipal court. There's not much noteworthy about those two charges, defacement or possession of graffiti materials. One thing that's probably worth saying is our definitions of what is a graffiti material and our definition. and our definition of what is defacement or what is graffiti are very broad definitions. That's a good thing. We've never, that I'm aware of, been limited in prosecuting a graffiti case or a possession of graffiti materials case because our definitions or the language of the code was too narrow. We have had attempts by individuals to circumvent those codes by being creative about the material they've used to commit graffiti. So an example is if somebody uses chalk and draws on a building with chalk, draws on a sidewalk with chalk, that does not fall under our graffiti code. It's not permanent. It washes away immediately. What we have seen people do is grind up chalk, mix it with water to create a more permanent paint-like substance. And that did fall under our definition and we were able to successfully prosecute that. And so that's about all that's noteworthy from what graffiti said, what defacement says, or what possession of graffiti material says. The code sections that we see that are not cited into our municipal court frequently have to do with two main categories. One is trying to keep graffiti materials out of the hands of graffiti artists and juveniles. And the other is our graffiti ordinance as it relates to juveniles. Our graffiti ordinance was enacted in 2008. I believe Mayor McNally signed it in 2008. And it looks to me like a real robust attempt to deal with graffiti in the year 2008. And the reason I think that's noteworthy is because I don't think anybody presenting here tonight believes that as of today's date, the best way we can fight graffiti in our city is by keeping graffiti materials out of juveniles' hands or graffiti artists' hands. I think I've joked that it reads to me like an ordinance that was enacted before Amazon existed. There are some requirements in our code about signs that have to be placed in stores that say it's illegal to sell this to anyone under the age of 18. And with our definition of graffiti materials, it's so broad, that sign would have to be posted. Excuse me, anywhere a store sells a Sharpie, anywhere a store sells shoe polish could fall under our graffiti material code. And I just don't think in this day and age, anybody presenting here tonight thinks that that's how we can mitigate the issue of graffiti in our city is by keeping the materials out of juveniles' hands or adults' hands. We just don't think that's feasible in this day and age. Because if we put up all these signs in all these stores, they could get them through some other means. So that's one observation about the graffiti code sections that we don't often see is I think at the time in 2008, it made a lot of sense, but I don't know that that's how we can attack that issue in this day and age. The second point has to do with juveniles, and there's going to be a slide later on that addresses some statistics from our municipal court as far as the number of charges that have been written into our municipal court for each year since 2008. And that is our graffiti code spends a decent amount of time regulating and kind of micromanaging issues about graffiti as it relates to juveniles. And as you'll see from these statistics, I don't know that this has changed or if it was necessarily ever the case, but we don't necessarily think that as of right now, juveniles are driving the majority of our graffiti issues in the city. But those are two areas that our code seem to focus on, that we don't know that, you know, increasing the prosecution or the enforcement against juveniles, we don't necessarily think that would be the most effective way to mitigate graffiti. And we also don't think trying to keep graffiti materials out of folks' hands are the best way we can mitigate the graffiti problem in the city. So that's the basic overview of our graffiti code. We have one criminal code section, which is defacement. So the potential penalty for defacement is a fine of $2,500 and up to 364 days in jail. All of our other graffiti code violations are going to be civil infractions, meaning there's no potential jail time, there's that fine of up to $2,500. And there may be some additional things that come along with civil infraction, such as community service and some other things. But defacement is our criminal code section where we can jail people if appropriate. All the other charges are civil infractions. There are some other code sections. For example, the potential penalties for defacement recommends a first fine of $200 for a first conviction, a recommended second fine for a second conviction of $500, and for a third conviction, it is a recommended $1,000 fine. Those are not mandatory minimum fines. Those are recommended fines, which gives the Court the authority to deviate from that recommendation if the Court finds it appropriate. We have some recommendations also for community service under our code. And community service is recommended a minimum of 30 hours for a defacement charge. And there's also an interesting component to the community service recommendation, which is that if a juvenile is given community service, there is a recommendation or presumption, which means again, not mandatory, that the, that one parent be present for at least 50% of that juvenile's community service. I think that that's a great idea in theory. I think Mr. Pettigo can expand a little bit. But in the conversation we had, the restorative component of our community service, I think may function more as a punishment than it actually does repaying the community. And part of the reason is because if you imagine Mr. Pettigo here trying to wrangle some juveniles into some community service, juveniles who don't want to be there, don't want to do it and disagree with it, they might not be the most effective graffiti cleaner-uppers you've ever seen. You know, Mr. Pettigo might be a lot quicker and do a better job if he wasn't working with those juveniles than if he was. So it's a wonderful idea and I support that community service aspect of it. But as far as addressing and mitigating the issue of graffiti in our city, that may not be the most efficient way to do it. So that's an overview of our graffiti code. I think I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pettigo at this point.
Next slide, please. So this slide and the following slide are just examples of some graffiti we have. You can go to the next slide. Just some examples of where we have graffiti and it's kind of high to low, small electrical boxes, rooftops, any kind of property. But it really is a good illustration of how a few individuals, out of all eight of those pictures, I think there was only two, maybe three names that are prolific in there. And it really is an illustration of how one or two or three individuals can do a significant amount of damage. Next slide, please. While we're still maintaining the overall three-pronged approach to dealing with graffiti, these are some of the new challenges we face. Some of the social norms have changed in normalizing that criminal behavior. The more, they're a little more difficult to process or to prosecute, excuse me. We're focused on, with lower staff, we're focusing more on higher priority cases. Different prosecutorial standards, excuse me. And just that prioritizing the workload to sort of reflect those social norms. And it quite honestly is really, really difficult to catch these individuals. It's a very opportunistic crime. It doesn't have to happen at night, but night of cover doesn't hurt. But for most of these individuals, a lot of that graffiti can be done in a matter of seconds. So if there's a 10, 12, 15 second gap in between people passing by, they can do it at that time. So, and the social media influence for these individuals where a local problem or a local individual is now because of all the social media outlets, they're gaining global notoriety and that's really what they want to do. Kind of couple that challenge with our legal murals that we have in the city. They're really good and they're beautiful and they take care of the city. But it is in conflict with sort of this underground ideal. If those individuals that are doing the illegal graffiti respect that artist or the mural, they'll tend to just paint on the sides of it or around it. And if they don't respect that painting or that individual, then they'll mark right over. And then when you want to mitigate that graffiti, the delay becomes more heavy because some of these artists are out of town. They've got other obligations. It's difficult to get them back to come repair that piece of graffiti. Next slide, please. So this is really our three-pronged approach. It still works and it still is effective today when you take into consideration those challenges that we had before. Getting, removing the graffiti and getting rid of it as quickly as we can is a big component of that. Educating the public and the community can really help build some bonds sort of back and forth. And how do we support the community? How do they support us in our efforts to remove graffiti and then hopefully apprehend the individuals? And then the enforcement component of it with being able to identify and charge the suspects. We're still doing that. Again, we just have some of those more difficult challenges. Next slide, please. So what are we doing? Some of our potential solutions is along those routes, continue to educate people, continue to enforce, continue to eradicate and use our resources that we have available inside the police department. We have the special enforcement team, our school resource officers, we have the investigations division. And utilizing all of those resources along with our surveillance cameras, other city departments to partner with, and then potentially collaborating. So instead of just us and Thornton and Federal Heights and Broomfield kind of doing their own thing, maybe putting a conglomerate case against somebody that's really crushing kind of all of our cities and taking one totality of a case to either county jurisdiction. Next slide.
Okay, so these are the court statistics dating back to 2008. In 2008, we didn't actually have any graffiti filings, so it's left off here. So if you look at those columns, you'll see defacement. And then I put minor, which means possession of graffiti materials by a minor. And then you'll see that third column that says graffiti materials. So you'll see that, a couple of observations, and one thing I might offer is I don't know that we want to simply look at these numbers and assume that those numbers accurately represent the ebbs and flows of the amount of graffiti in our city. I think there are some external factors that may also influence those numbers. However, a couple of things I already touched upon. One is if you look at the column for minor, meaning possession of graffiti materials by a minor, there are not a ton of cases there. You know, in 2012, we had four charges. In 2014, we had five charges. But when you compare those to possession of graffiti materials, meaning possession of graffiti materials by an adult, the adult possession far outweighs the minor possession. And you also see on the left-hand column, the defacement. Between defacement and graffiti materials, you can see those make up the vast majority of our charges. So towards the right column, you'll see a column, sorry, towards the right, you'll see a column that says total charges. That is every graffiti-related charge that we have in that particular year. So 2009, 2010, 2011, not many. 2012, we start seeing some more. 2013, 2014, we see quite a few. And then it fluctuates from there on out. The last column on the far right, I find a bit interesting because those are the number of individual defendants that we had for each particular year. So what that means is in our years where we had the highest number of total graffiti filings, being 2013 and 2014, all of those charges came from 10 individuals and 18 individuals, even though we're talking about over 100 charges for each of those years. Interestingly, if you look at 2016, when you look at the separate number of defendants, there were 65 total graffiti charges and there were six separate defendants who made up all of those charges. One individual defendant was responsible for 57 of the 65 graffiti charges that year. I suspect Mr. Pettigo remembers that name because there was quite a concerted effort. He was tagging all over the city and there was a pretty substantial investigation that Mr. Pettigo was a part of that ultimately culminated in the city being able to charge one individual defendant for tagging dozens and dozens of times all over the city. So I find the number of defendants a little bit interesting because we see a bit more consistency there than we do with the number of total charges. You know, I touched on some of those external factors that I think might also play into these things. You know, if you look at the more recent years, 2019, 2020, up to 2022, you know, I don't think anybody's surprised to hear me say that police department staffing levels may have an impact on the total number of charges we see. And there may be other external factors that might not allow us to tie the number of charges we see in our court with, you know, being a perfect representation of the amount of graffiti that we see in the city. Next slide, please. I think that's where I'm handing it to Eric Otzelberger.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm just going to talk briefly about private property. Norman Company are the public property people. Code enforcement focuses on private property and graffiti is unfortunately one of those double victim crimes, whether it's presidential property, commercial, HOA common area where properties are tagged and then as the private property owner, they're responsible for the removal. We do take a progressive enforcement approach. And what you see up there, you know, we start, you know, if it's a first-time situation with a courtesy notice, give it a little bit of time, notice of violation. We are able to levy fines through our administrative citations. However, fines don't make the graffiti go away necessarily. And we're not about issuing fines for the money. It's just, you know, a tool in the tool belt to try to gain voluntary compliance. We do have some private properties in the city where we have out-of-state ownership that isn't always the most responsive. And it's effective for us to be able to levy fines in those situations. And those fines can become liens. And if those liens aren't satisfied, they can become special assessments on the tax bills. Ultimately, we, if we're looking to abate graffiti, we need to issue writ of summons, issue a summons and seek a judge-ordered civil nuisance abatement. So our code currently gives us summary abatement authority for four things. And summary abatement is where we can go administratively and remedy violations. And the four things that our code allows us to do that right now are vegetation, snow and ice, sidewalk obstructions, and then ice boxes, refrigerators, going back to the day, you know, you don't want a kid playing with that. Icebox, you know, that shows, dating our code a bit, you know, and it literally says icebox in the code. But unfortunately, we, and you know, there are pros and cons to this. We don't have the power to conduct summary abatements for graffiti. So, you know, under the category of coming with potential options or, you know, tools in the tool belt, and it's not one tool that always gets to voluntary compliance in the private side. You know, is, would city council want to consider amending WMC to allow for summary abatements? Because if, you know, and want to qualify, a vast majority of the time, I'd say 90% of the time, we're working with property ownership that will remove the graffiti, will, you know, they want to do the right thing. It's the rule of 10, 10% that it's a little more difficult. And that's when we use our other enforcement tools. However, best, so when you see that judge-ordered civil nuisance abatement, and we've done this before, where graffiti was kind of a part of an overall nuisance situation. Best case, from when we serve the summons to, you know, when there's that court date, if there isn't a continuance or things like that. If things track as fast as they can, that's at least 60 days to get that judge's order before we can go in and abate the nuisance. So that's potentially 60, and once again, 60 days is a best-case scenario. So, you know, that's not necessarily remedying the graffiti if you have a responsible party that's not interested in taking care of that. One of the things I want to share, and this wasn't ready at press time, so it's not on the slide, but I'll just, and there's one thing for everyone at the table here, but just a little before and after. So for the last two years with the support of the Policy and Budget Office, City Manager's Office and City Council, we've appropriated, or the city's appropriated $10,000, which isn't a lot of money, but a little bit. The last, for 2021 and 2022, for what we're calling a neighbor assistance for what we call, what we're calling a neighbor assistance pilot program to try to aim to assist with, with some, some tricky violations, property standards issues. And what you, what you see what I passed out here, then there's two-sided before and after. The Harris Park Townhomes 2 is a small HOA with 17 property owners. And the wall you see here is just a little bit north of 72nd, near 72nd and Need. And it's been a very problematic space, large canvas. You see pretty significant graffiti there. The other side, you see those are bullet holes and human feces on, on the fence. And the poor HOA, you know, they've, they've been sinking significant resource into, you know, just getting tagged and tagged again. So we, we worked with them in a 50/50 cost share to pilot an anti-graffiti coating that we're, we're going to try out here because, because it's, you know, just a matter of time, you know, before it gets tagged again. However, you know, the way this product works, it should make removal quicker, less expensive, easier for the HOA to maintain going forward. So we, we thought, you know, from a pilot perspective, this was a good thing to try to see if we could give them a little bit of more of a fighting chance to sort of, you know, have quicker and less expensive removal of the graffiti. Like I said, $10,000 a year, it's, it's just sort of been testing, testing a concept. And it hasn't just been limited to graffiti. You know, we've assisted, we've, we've just done a handful of cases, mostly with older at-risk adults who have had, you know, are independent, but have had some, some issues and some neighborhood concerns with property standards violations. And so I think, you know, we've been able to do a little proof of concept that there's, there's some good in that effort. On the subject of graffiti, we are aware several of our neighbors do have assistance programs for residential, commercial and HOA properties. On the city and county of Denver, actually one of my recent hires, we stole him from city and county of Denver. And they, they have a program, and I know all these programs are similar. You know, city and county of Denver, city of Thornton and city of Commerce City, where you sign an indemnification waiver because, you know, whether it's, it's power washing, sandblasting, painting, things can happen. And, you know, you're sort of giving the jurisdiction permission to, to come onto your property and, and try to remedy the issue. In the Denver program, once you're signed up, you're signed up. So if it's a repeat situation, they will, they will go and, and remediate the graffiti. Thornton, they, they budget, you know, contractually about $150,000 a year for, for abatement and assistance programs. They, they also have some commodities because they'll do some, some things as staff as well. And that budget is about $40,000. So all in, I would say, and this is, this is abatements and assistance. Thornton's budget is $200,000. Commerce City, who, they've been doing this for a number of years. They have a $250,000 abatement budget. And they also have, that, that, that includes abatements and assistance for, for remedying private property issues. Historically at Westminster, you know, philosophically, we've had a leaner abatement budget. And we've been, you know, through, through city manager's office support and council support, we've, we've been inching it up a little bit. But this year, you know, our total operating budget for abatements, and including this, this little money for the pilot, is $75,000. You know, recent nuisance violation abatements that we've had do, like, like a, a big one somewhat recently was at Cottonwood Village at 88th and Federal. That was a $15,000, you know, there was graffiti, there was junk and rubbish, there was vegetation, there were homeless encampments. It was, it was a fairly big job. So with, with a couple of major abatements, you know, we can, you know, spend that money fair, fairly quickly. So, you know, we're, we're, we're wondering, and this, this is, this is sort of something that, that we're thinking about vetting through the 2023 budget process, you know? Is, is there an interest in continuing some sort of neighbor assistance program, you know, or even, or expanding it? And so, so yeah, it's, once again, under the category of solutions or, or, you know, more tools in the tool belt. I guess from the private side, you know, just two questions I'd pose this evening, you know? Is, is there interest in, in looking at this concept of summary abatements as, as an authority for graffiti? And then on, on the neighbor assistance side, you know, is there interest in a program similar to what Denver, Thornton and Commerce City are operating right now?
Can I just give slightly more definition of the difference between the civil nuisance abatements and the summary abatements?
So, so the, the civil nuisance abatement, that, that, that process is spelled out in our code and it's basically a judicial process. So, you know, and, and we, we, we serve a summons, it's, it's not a criminal summons. It's in, Brian and his team, we work very closely with, with them. But we're, we're seeking the authority. And oftentimes when we're doing a civil nuisance abatement, it's because there's a personal property involved. So, you know, we're, we're, summary abatement is per code, we have the ability to take, take more immediate action. We, we can take administrative action. And the way Westminster municipal code is right now, I mentioned the, the four things that it specifically calls out where we, we have a contractor. And so vegetation, you know, if, if we have a chronic property, and we have chronic properties across the city where, you know, ownership just isn't, and it's the rule of 10. I mean, 90% of the time we get there, or close to 90% of the time, but the 10%, it's nice to have that summary abatement tool because we can basically order, order a cut and, and knock back the vegetation. Sidewalk obstructions, you know, for mobility situations, we, we, we can just go and do that. Snow and ice, you know, fortunately we're in Colorado and the sun helps us most of the time. But, but graffiti, and graffiti, there, there's not personal property, but there, there, you know, on the con side of things, there is the potential damage to personal property that could occur, you know, especially if you're, Gary knows this much better than I do, but it's, you know, despite your best of intentions, you know, some, sometimes in the removal or the abatement, you know, there, there can be, you know, things happen. So it, it's, it's, I guess, you know, just one of those policy, you know, there is, there's probably some policy questions and some legal questions to that. And then tonight is just kind of introducing just, just this concept of, okay, it's something that, that could potentially be investigated. But yeah, but the summary abatement, we can just do versus, hey, you serve a summons, you know, the court date has to be at least 21 days out. Does that court date happen on that date? Does, you know, the, the, the defendant or their representative, their attorney ask for a continuance? Oftentimes, you know, there can be a continuance after continuance. So, you know, the, the, it just, we, we don't have any control on the timing, you know, seeking the authority to abate the nuisance. So summary abatement is just a quicker process. And, and there's language in the code, the code that talks about immediate threat to public health, safety, welfare. You know, we've only invoked that with, with several homeless encampments on private property where there was human waste and drug paraphernalia because of the environmental risks. You know, we were able to invoke that and, and take action. But, you know, that's a pretty high threshold. I mean, we couldn't, yeah, I think with a straight face, say graffiti is an immediate threat to public health, safety and welfare. It's certainly a detrimental, you know, not, not a positive thing. But I, I, I don't, I wouldn't feel comfortable invoking summary abatement for graffiti because I don't think it would fit that definition with, with immediate threat to public safety.
I could kind of further answer that question. So summary abatement can happen without a judge granting the city the authority to abate this nuisance. And the, the four categories that Mr. Otzelberger just described are kind of tied to public safety issues. The vegetation, I could see how vegetation, if it became overgrown, could start doing property damage and things like that. But certainly ice on a sidewalk, people could slip, sidewalks being obstructed. If there's an old 1950s fridge that a kid could get locked in, that needs to get taken care of too. Graffiti doesn't exactly fall into the category of being a risk to public health or safety, which is, I think, one of the reasons it's not currently included in our summary abatement. But essentially summary abatement, the city can do without asking a judge permission. If we were going to abate graffiti as of right now, we would have to file that case into court and ultimately get a judge to find that the property is a nuisance and grant the city the authority to abate that nuisance, which is that kind of 60-day timeframe that, that Eric described a little bit earlier. So if we want to clean up graffiti quickly, we either need to do it summarily, which we can't currently do under our code, or we need to get permission from the property owner or motivate the property owner to clean it up themselves. When, I, I wanted to be clear, this neighbor assistance program that Mr. Otzelberger is kind of floating to council to inquire whether we want to expand that program, that is this group's idea of if council asked us the question, what more can we do to mitigate the problem of graffiti in our city? And what's the best bang for our buck? This is the idea that this group supports. You know, for example, if council decided to try to create a graffiti task force of uniformed police officers who are wearing ghillie suits and hiding in bushes, council can do that, but that's going to be really expensive. And we don't actually believe that would effectively mitigate graffiti in our city. What we have is this category of cases that we don't currently have a lot of options other than working with property owners to voluntarily mitigate, which is, which is private property. The city does not have the authority to just walk onto private property and clean up that graffiti. Now, if we through this neighbor assistance program get the permission of the property owner to do that, well, now we have a whole new category of graffiti that we can mitigate, which is graffiti on private property, but the property owner is not promptly cleaning up themselves.
Is the summary abatement something that we would need for that neighborhood assistance?
No, they're, they're, they're independent of each other because we, as with the other jurisdictions and even as we've done with the pilot, we have a city attorney's office approved indemnification waiver. And in the, in the 5K projects that we've done, you know, we've, we've had the, the private property owner be willing to, to sign that indemnification waiver that has given us sort of the ability to, to go and, and conduct the work.
Thank you. Mayor Protim.
I have to tell you, I'm a little frustrated and, and I'll tell you why. I sat upstairs in 2015 before I was on council. I listened to the former council talk about how this was too harsh. And then for the time that I've been on council, I was told how it wasn't codified and this wasn't something that would be upheld. I can't tell you how many times I was told that this wasn't codified and that it couldn't be upheld because it was never codified. Excuse my French, but that sure as shit looks like it's codified to me. So I'm, I'm, I am a little put back that here it is, that I've heard is not something that the city could do legally and uphold it. I understand what you're saying, that you don't think that this is the best path. Once upon a time, there was a judge who thought it was the best path because I listened to him upstairs, tell a media person how this is the law and we're going to uphold it, we're going to hold people accountable. And once upon a time, we had a reputation as a city that held people accountable when they broke the law. So I'm, I'm kind of in between and, and I'm sorry, but I have to voice my frustration. But to answer your question, I think that we do need to look at enforcement because I don't subscribe to, that's not good bang for our buck because people should know that they're going to be held accountable. However, I do also understand there's the other side of it. The other side of it is the way it looks and whether or not cleaning it up. So if, if you don't think that having people go out and clean it up is, is a, the proper punishment and they could do some other community service, I'm all ears to that. I am open to, and I think it's a good idea for us to figure out how we can be good neighbors to people whose private property is damaged. Because one of the things that I don't like about what I've heard in the past is that you have private property owners to no fault of their own that are then being held accountable through our system. And I understand that could be a variety of reasons. Maybe they just don't have time in their busy life to go out and, and clean it up. So if there's a way that if they're willing to allow us to partner with them and be able to clean it up, great, because I, to me, if it's not to fault of their own, they're not the ones who went out and damaged the property. And they're willing to, you know, work with us to get it cleaned up, why would we not want to do that? So I would be open for expanding that. But, but I certainly would like to figure out how we get back to being known for a city that is, doesn't put up with it. Because I, and this is along the same lines of what I asked for last meeting, is that I would like us to look at some of the serious crimes that the state, for whatever reason, has decided we're not going to hold people accountable for. And I want the city to be known for a city that's going to hold people accountable when you break laws in the city. And so, you know, we got to, this is one that we certainly have a problem with. Auto theft is certainly one we have a problem with. Catalytic converters is certainly one we have a problem with. I'm, I'm open to what, which ones those need to be, you know? But, but we do need to figure out how we instill the fact that we care about law and order in the city of Westminster, in my opinion.
Counselor Baker.
I have to echo Mayor Protim DeMott. But abatement means we can charge the legal property owner the cost of the abatement, right? Correct. That's why I think this neighborhood partner program is so much better. Okay, because it's faster, quicker and stuff like that. Is there a way that we can make a summary abatement at our cost and not the homeowners?
We, we can do that as of right now. I mean, we, I, I've worked with code enforcement and we've done abatements where the city just eats the cost of the abatement. And then we've done abatements where the city pays that cost of abatement upfront and then places a lien on the property. And then we've had cases where we've cleaned up properties and we've asked for the cost of that cleanup through restitution through the case in our court. So, so we, we do have those options currently.
Okay, so I mean, we could start that already.
As far as summary abatement?
Well, I mean, summary abatement, we'd have to change our code.
Right.
Okay, but in that, we could put that, the summary abatement, if we decide to do that, is at our cost, right?
We could choose, yes, we, we, yes, the answer is yes. And we could choose whether it's the city's cost or whether we do end up holding the property owner liable for that cost. We, we could choose that option.
Right, because so many-
I don't mean, we have to permanently choose it. I mean, we could choose on a case-by-case basis.
Right, I, I, I would like to give you discretion because a lot of it's going to tend on detail specific to the thing. If it's just a little bit of thing and we can do that in an hour, there's, a summary abatement would be wonderful to that. But if it's an extensive kind of thing. Because why I like that is that the homeowner is the victim twice. And, and I mean, the graffiti person has already done it. So we don't want to add on another injury to that insult he's had. In your chart, talked about charges, but do the charges correlate with the incidence of graffiti? And I look at these charges and say, well, we had a whole bunch of graffiti done in 13 and 14, but now it's tapered off to almost nothing?
That, that's what I'm not sure we can say because I think there are some external factors that influence those numbers to where they don't necessarily correlate to the amount of graffiti we have in our city. Now, there may be some correlation. It makes sense to me that, you know, if we have 2013 with a small number and 2014 with a much larger number, I, I think it's probably safe to say that to some extent in 2014, graffiti was a bigger problem for the city. But I don't think we can just look at the total number of charges and trust that those are exact representations of how bad the graffiti was that year.
Okay, so how do we get a better, better handle on how bad is the graffiti?
You know, it's difficult for me to answer that question because I become involved in the process when charges get filed into municipal court. So the, the police department may have better impressions or information on whether or not those charges correlate with how bad or, or how, you know, mitigated the graffiti issue is from year to year.
Anybody can drive around the city and see graffiti is everywhere.
It hasn't been cleaned up?
No. And when I use Access Westminster, it takes forever to get a thing back, so I hate that app. And anyway, I am so frustrated, I can't even speak, so go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, no, because that's, that's really what we need to know. See, because each of us have our own little view of it and it's not necessarily the same. So how could we get a better handle on the amount of graffiti?
One thing that I think is, is to me humorous about this is when, before I was on council, I had an event in Countryside Park. And that was actually the first time they did a movie in the park because the Neighbors for Countryside and I were the ones who hosted the movie in the park. We wanted to do a sidewalk chalk contest during the day, which we did. I was told by my Parks Department here that that was graffiti and that we weren't allowed to do that. And I actually had to get a special exception from the then Director of Parks and Rec, who was on trip at the time, to allow us to do that. So I mean, I don't understand how we've come to such a full circle as the city. Granted, I think that that was ridiculous. Like you brought up like- Like you brought up like a a really good point about, you know, what constitutes graffiti? And and crime is all about intent. And if the intent is I'm having a sidewalk chalk thing or my kid got my their sidewalk chalk and and wrote their name on the side of a building, like that's not criminal. Criminal is somebody who goes out with the intent of defacing public or private property. Um, so I'm, you know, again, I'm all for recommendations that say, hey, here's how we could better suit our code so that we're addressing criminal behavior. Um, but I don't want to just say, well, it's not going to make a difference if we address the criminal behavior. And and that's my frustration, like if you gotta have both sides of the coin to me. Like, I'm not willing to just say, hmm, is what it is. Because you know what? That's how we as a nation have got a got is where it is, is got us where we're at. You you know, you you have to address crime and I'm not saying unfairly punish people um because of whatever, you know, different thing people get upset about, whether it's it's economic status. But if you did a crime, you did a crime. Like, and and people should be held accountable for it.
Question regarding the summary abatement, like if we um pay for it, it looks like we have some options, right? Like if somebody's continuing to let something kind of fester, um, do you know, like the this town home HOA, I mean, do they have insurance? Is graffiti covered by insurance?
Not, I mean, every every, I don't know the ins and outs of every policy, but but you know, that's sort of damage. Well, I don't know, maybe Councilor Seymour has some insight into that.
Well, the only okay, I'll just qualify why I'm asking. I'm just kind of curious to know, like, as a source of funding for, you know, however much we think we might need for this neighborhood assistance program, I was just curious enough, like, there's any any opportunity to recoup on, you know, if if insurance. Sorry, if it's a dumb question, but that is-
It's not a dumb question. I'd be happy to give a qualified answer to that. I've been hanging around Mr. Frankel too often. Is that especially in this case, most HOA insurance has gotten to a place um with the use of extremely high deductibles to be a disaster coverage. And so while there may be coverage under the contract, the deductible in most cases is not going to be met, you know, short of burning the entire fence down around the entire property. Yeah, so yeah, there's coverage, but it's not it's not practical because the deductible most of these places have to cover. No.
Thank you.
Yeah, and 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 the drain here is just the 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 constant kind of, I mean, it's it's quite a canvas and and just, you know, they they've been hit a lot. And I I think, you know, the the HOA board, you know, they'll roll up their sleeves and you know, but it's time and time again. And depending on the materials that are used, that's where we said, okay, i- is there any way, any strategy to try to make this easier, quicker, more cost effective for future removals? So we'll, you know, this we're, this is, I mean, a fairly fairly new product, so we'll we'll see how it works. I mean, fortunately, it didn't get tagged during the curing time. We were a little nervous, but it didn't get tagged during the curing time, so that's good. Um, so for for some of these kind of highly victimized areas, you know, just-
Yeah.
But but it's just, yeah, I mean, i- it's more of that aesthetic versus that that hard damage thing and the deductibles, that makes sense.
Some of the time they got shot up.
Yeah.
It was there for a long time. I I reported it several times. Um, Councilor Seymour?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, question on on the summary abatement, I guess it would be however we wrote that into the code um would, but can we can we define between uh private property and then commercially owned, well, commercial private property and residential private property is the type of abatements? Because I I see that that uh an abatement with a commercial property, they they should have the means and order and they have a greater, I believe, a greater care to the community to to quickly get rid of that. So that if we went that direction, I'd like to talk about the legalities of doing that versus the private. And, you know, I I I agree that we need to hold people accountable, but I see this also as a quality of life issue in our city is while we're doing that, how how can we make a concerted effort? And uh, you know, th- this can make a quick impact by a relatively relatively small dollars. And so and and I I see that two edged front. It'll take a while to make that statement from a from a standpoint of of criminality, but what's the real issue? Our residents want a beautiful city to live in and and this, I believe, disproportionately affects a south part of our city. And so, uh, not to say that I haven't seen it on the backside of the Walmart at at one hundred thirty six either, but um it really stands out in certain properties and and the the commercial properties is really where I would like to go after on the code too. So um because in in many cases, there's dollars available there. Uh, whether they care or not, we have to force it out of them is is another, force is a bad word. Um, ask them to do their civic duty and pay the bill for the cleanup. But at least, you know, the other side of that is 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 if we have the ability to do that and do more immediate eradication, it's going to pay off for them in the long run too because they're not going to get it as often. So just my general thoughts on that.
If you want to cross the Access Westminster piece, I totally agree. Um, it is hard to navigate that, uh, work that system and get those notifications out to the involved departments.
That's the problem. It doesn't go where it needs to go.
Exactly. Well, and one of the successes that we've had, especially during COVID, is engagement on the pub- uh, public property side. Uh, we've been able to get those notifications over to parks. They're cleaning those up quickly, usually within forty eight hours. Gary's able to take care of like the smaller Excel boxes and things like that with spray paint and and following up on that. One of the issues that we're having is, as clumsy as Access Westminster is, moving to the app, we're having a hard time pulling through those notification pieces so that we can notify citizens, hey, we got your got your, thanks for your notification, we're going to get on this, um, or when it's done. So uh, those are kind of those parts that we're juggling in the air right now. Sharon and I spent a bunch of time working on that today. I'd like with your guys' support, if we can get to a place where we get our PD app working, if we can get to a single point system. So um, we can do those distributions, be a lot easier to manage and for Gary to oversee because ultimately he's the single point source that all those access come to at least originally. So if, you know, he takes a day off or something, those things could sit hours or days. Um, and then, you know, then we farm that to parks and and try to engage the rest of the system on those. I think in the in the public setting, we've done a pretty good job of chasing those things and and working on partnerships, you know, we've shared a lot of equipment. Anything that we can touch, we do quickly. Um, and especially when there's in the the public um safety piece where there's some racial or highly toxic type of graffiti or stickers or things like that, we've been in a process where if we know about those, we can get patrol officers to go and just, even if it's just black paint over a white surface for that night, take care of those types of things. So we have some of those parts in progress, but it's so fragmented and there's it's just all over the place. Um, so we can do some help in in that space also.
We used to have it that the citizens are the ones that brought this all to us. They were sick of it.
Yeah.
I'm sick of it today. And they started in one neighborhood. They had walkers in the morning. They would report to a group that would be calling. Those people, the walkers, reported where the graffiti was. The phone callers called the people that are willing to paint. And within less than twelve hours, there was no graffiti. They did that day after day and it didn't take long. There was no more graffiti in that neighborhood. And we told the story. And I don't know where the stories went and I don't know what all happened, but we look horrid. We are a mess, we're not beautiful. I can't think of a utility box I've seen lately that isn't graffiti. Um, I have, I've reported a couple of times, this sign right where I walk, Gibbs, has um graffiti on it. It's never gotten changed out. I report my boxes, they sometimes get painted. They're looking at, um, I think they only have a couple of little things on it lately. It depends on if I have my phone with me or not to take pictures. But if we took the time through our communication department to start telling people what to do, how to get free paint, who wants to um be a contact in their neighborhood to do what's around them, I think the community would step up. Gary doesn't have to do everything, but um because who owns the utility box? I mean, we're, we can all take green paint and paint over. But um, I I, as I said, I'm flabbergasted. This is just just total, you're telling me why we aren't doing things, you're telling me why acting as if we don't have graffiti and I could take you in a car and spend three hours showing you graffiti.
Gary spends hours weekly out in field painting over, so we're we're spending time, you know, he'll do an entire corridor for hours. Totally agree.
Can we get more help? Can we just add, can we just really direct the city manager to increase the help?
So so this is another one of those areas, like with the PD, where I feel like this is an easier way or an easier thing to get people to help with this kind of situation versus sworn officers. Same concept that I've brought up multiple times, between whether it's parking or um the report writers, like, so I would be on board with that because I feel like you it's would be easier to get people in a a job like that if we defined some some positions that, you know, it's unfortunate. And I don't know, hopefully that's not a long term position, but I would be on board with it.
Okay, obviously, if you're, if the process worked before and you and we get right on it, then that lessens the longer term impact.
Get it gone within twenty four hours, it's a proven fact. It will, they get tired of it, they want to go where it's going to be.
Well, I don't see why we can't just really direct the-
I mean, that's what our police department told me in two thousand and five or whatever year we did all of this.
Yeah, we can, we can get one of our park rangers, Karen, we just hired another one, have him on it for a couple of months.
I just think there's an opportunity to engage community and have some free help because people care.
Right.
And we have retired people that are asking. Um, I it, I don't know if Lowe's and Home Depot are still giving the free paint.
Start the graffiti busters.
Yeah.
Snow busters.
Yes, sir.
Some of the sort of constant graffiti and and some of the numbers that we talked about a little bit are from a particular, and that's sort of why I had the initial illustrations, right, is a particular very small group of individuals can do a huge amount of damage. And if they're persistent, it it, they almost fa- it feels like sometimes I get followed because within a day, the graffiti that I just removed is back up and it really does look very similar. So then we go back and we kind of chase it a little bit, but that goes back to the enforcement side of it is taking care of those individuals once we, once we figure out who they are as well, right? Right? Right now, I would venture a guess that, excuse me, the vast majority of our graffiti is being done by somewhere between three and five individuals. It's not a a huge group of people, it's a very low number, but they are very prolific. And and being able to stay on top of that is is important, obviously.
If I could add on to that, since both Mayor Protim and Councilor Seymour referenced holding people accountable, when we have caught people, see, see, part of the challenge, I think the majority of the challenge is with catching them, not holding them accountable once we do catch them. We hold our repeat graffiti offenders accountable. Uh, defense attorneys and the defendants themselves are often surprised at what plea offers are and they're surprised at the sentences they've received. Literally last week, a graffiti offender was sentenced to ninety days in jail. Uh, and that compared to uh some other criminal offenses in our city is a pretty hefty sentence. So when we do see those graffiti repeat offenders, uh, and and the police departments caught them and they're now in our municipal court, uh, the prosecutors and the judges are holding those repeat graffiti offenders accountable with elevated fines, community service, but for the repeat offenders, they often receive jail sentences.
Okay, we do have some kind of camera system that we can put out, don't we?
We do have surveillance cameras.
It's gotta be a huge, high quality. We have to camouflage it somehow.
Yes.
Or else it'll fade again.
We put them up pretty high, but our our cameras are a good resource, but they're they're also not an end all be all.
Oh, they have all kinds of-
Because if we focus a camera on a narrow area, like a a wall, for instance, twenty, thirty, forty feet long, that those individuals have to hit that wall again, right? If they skip that wall and hit the two on the on the either side of it, we may not catch that interaction. So they're a good tool. Um, they're just not a, unfortunately, they don't-
That would be like a huge manpower cost to monitor them, so that's out too.
Another challenge is, uh, you know, often the way crime is portrayed in television and films is not accurate. One thing that is accurate is the way you may have seen the way graffiti offenders dress in film and TV is accurate, meaning their hood is up, their hat is on, these days their mask is on. So even if there was a pretty robust camera system, it's very difficult to identify the person unless they're somehow caught wearing the same clothing or in the act.
And and like you said, monitoring is, I can see the event and I can go back and say, okay, I have an individual and I have an individual's description, but I have no idea who this individual is. So then it starts that investigative process as well.
Mayor Protim, one of the other pieces too that we lost uh the last couple of years was we had a, we still have a good relationship with schools, through the school resource officers and the teachers. One of the ways that Gary was able to piece some of these cases together a couple of years ago was the school resource officer, the teachers found some of the notebooks of the kids that had all their art in it. Obviously, with the last two years being remote, we lost a lot of that connection, a lot of those intel, if you will. So that has dried up some of our, some of our sources in apprehending them. And that's really where the, I would say, a lot of this piece comes in is the actual apprehension of them because the laws in and of themselves haven't changed.
To that point, there's always somebody who knows something and money talks. And I do agree with Councilor Seymour, some of the abatement is the small price. Putting a ten thousand dollar bounty out to turn somebody in who gets prosecuted, I think is good money stack too. Because I think you you've got a fair point, but there's always somebody who knows who's doing it. And typically, they're probably somebody who would love some money and is, as that is, that's the way that, that's why those things work, why Crime Stoppers does what Crime Stoppers do. So I I would be open to if we thought that that might be a good spend. To me, it it seems like a cheap thing. Because I I think the the whole thing that I'd like to get at is once upon a time, we had a reputation and we saw less graffiti. I heard that from the presentations about graffiti when I took the multiple times I've taken the academy. So I know that some of these things, if you start getting a reputation, this is not the place to go do this. They're going to go across the street and do it. And and that's, that is reality. And so what I would like to accomplish is getting back to having the reputation because I could tell you right now, we don't have the reputation. And that's why it makes me mad to to set through meeting after meeting, being told we weren't taking this serious. I'm glad to hear that we are still holding people accountable, but I could tell you, that's not the reputation we have. And that's been in meetings that we've had in this room, in that room. So, you know, whatever it takes to get get that back so that people think twice before doing this kind of property damage in Westminster, I think that that helps solve the problem.
What else do you need from us?
So um, I guess a question would be is, I'm hearing clearly that obviously we want to continue our efforts on being tough as we can and identifying where we are able to and and make sure we're continuing to holding folks accountable. Um, the question that I do have is whether there's interest in two items that Eric has posed up here, which is the summary abatements and the continuing the neighbor, good neighbor assistance. Mayor, I hear you also mentioning looking to see whether there's a volunteer program at- Mayor, I hear you also mentioning looking to see whether there's a volunteer program effort that we could try to look into and we could certainly have staff research and see what that might take to get moving.
You've got an entire police alumni group to start.
A quick question on that. Once upon a time, we had a group called COPS that's a spinoff of the alumni group. And I know because I was a member of them and I went with my wife one night and we watched a, a construction site. Is that not something that we still use those residents for? Because I know that the whole thing with that group was they would do areas where there was issues. Like I think one of the first ones they did before I was involved was the, uh, break into the orchard. And they, you know, they would camp out and if they'd see people, then they would call it in. Those are extra set eyes. So I know that in the past we've done some of that, um, kind of volunteerism. I haven't heard about citizen, a meeting for citizens on patrol in a couple of years. I don't know if that, that program went away, but I think the mayor has a good point.
My utility boxes that Gibbs and I walk by are green. So if you have green paint, I'll take a brush in the paint every walk we talk and every day it will be cleaned up. That's what we need. I will step up and do it. It will mean I don't have to use Access Westminster. Okay, abatement, what's your thoughts?
I would be fine for going with a summary abatement if we could use the discretion and so not be charging the property owner this unforeseen bill. And I'd agree.
Agree.
Um, whether it's summary, you know, expanding our summary abatement, I, I think having the money for the neighborhood assistance program would be, I, I, I would support increasing it.
Sorry, the cost for the abatement piece? I think we have 75 in it right now and how much, well, so that'd be a place to start.
Yeah, the, the, the existing appropriation, the 2022 budget is 75,000. And council will see this through the 2023 budget process. But i- if, if we were going to look at enhancing and looking at some of our neighbors and just kind of what their spend has been for their programs, um, you know, we, we may, you know, propose increasing the, the overall budget to, uh, 100 to 150,000, you know, depending how active we want to be. Uh, like, like I mentioned Thornton, just being a peer, um, their contractual, uh, services budget for the year is 150,000. So it's, it's double what ours is right now.
So I think that, um, I'd say no, because in my opinion, the biggest issue we have in the city is car thefts. And we need to put as much resources towards that as possible. This to me is an issue, it's not bigger than that, and there's only so much money we can allocate to everything. So I think our top priority from a, from this standpoint should be more towards figuring out what to do with car thefts versus this. Um, I love the idea of having a volunteer task force. I mean, we have a super large city volunteer group, right? That list is like 2,000 people that typically volunteer throughout the year, right? We can activate them with the mayor's i- idea of this rapid task force that just goes and cleans it up. That's a better use of our time than spending 75 grand or more on this. Um, so that's where my head is at.
Counselor Seymour?
What, sorry?
Oh, no, I didn't, I, I'm sorry. You know, my head's crazy tonight.
I'm good with abatement.
Okay. Are you good if they go to 100 or 150?
Yeah, I would approve a budget increase.
I would, you know, I'm, I could get behind what, um, Counselor Zadi's saying too with, you know, just thinking about like where priorities for where funding should go and, um, you know, if there's a way to minimally, you know, I don't think like 75 to 100 is excessive. So like, you know, that would be helpful, but I really like the idea of extending volunteer.
Right, and arming them with paint and all that kind of stuff. And if they have summary abatement authority, then they don't have to have permission to land on it.
So Bruce, you're okay?
Yeah.
Mayor Protim?
I think that Counselor Obi has a good point that that needs to be a priority. But I think that we can chew gum and walk at the same time. And I don't think that we can turn our eye at either of these things, to be frank. That we, we have to start addressing these things. And that's why I said like, I, I'd like to know, I know, well, Rudi and I both agree, we need to look at auto thefts. I think we all agree, we need to look at the catalytic converters. We need to look at, at, um, the graffiti. I would be open to other areas for the police department to come back and say, here are other areas that I think we can make a concerted change by being more serious on certain crimes. The other one, and I heard this directly from our, our people in the cars, that obstruction is a problem because, and I, we see it on the news. People think that they can now get tough with the police, get involved where they shouldn't be. So I think that that's something for safety of both residents, citizens, people who think they should get involved where they shouldn't, and our officers, that I, I would like to address that as well. So just put that out there. I don't think that we can not make that a priority as Counselor Zadi said.
Does that give you enough direction? Thanks.
While we have the stakeholders in the room, Mayor, if I might, wanted to follow up with City Council, let you know that we have, uh, coming forward, an ordinance, an ordinance on median safety. We've also got other ordinances that this group has been developing for City Council consideration. And I wanted to know if City Council was amenable to having those agendized for first reading? Um, or if you would prefer that they come first in the study session? Um, the ordinances that we are looking at would be a comprehensive update to the animal control section of our code. Um, there would also be specific targeted updates to the code that would address the $500 threshold, which I believe currently limits our ability to pursue certain criminal charges. And it would be increased. And this is, um, a staff recommendation for consideration that we increase the $500, um, limit on our charging ability within the municipal court. Uh, we'd also have some targeted language to address default judgments and our ability to ensure that we can hold people accountable and enter default judgments. So we do have a, a package of ordinances that's ready for City Council consideration. Uh, if City Council is amenable to that coming on for first reading, we can fast track that for your consideration.
I'd like to see in the study session first.
Seymour?
Yeah, it sounds like an expanded packet, so it would be nice to see. I mean, we've already seen the median safety, but the rest of it would be nice to understand it.
I would like to start moving on some of this stuff, but if everybody would like to see in the study session, we can look at it there.
That's in the mail.
Um, once we have time to review it and ask questions.
Yes, as we're giving packets two weeks in advance, I'm, I'm sort of, I can read it and ask my questions.
That is a good point.
I'm, either way.
Study session.
So I have two, two for sure study sessions and the rest of us are saying, is it okay if we have the two weeks? Read it.
Two weeks is enough time for me to ask or say this isn't right.
Fast track it.
Thank you.
We're ready to take action. Okay, last agenda or before we go to executive session is the improvement.
Thank you. Judge, you're a man of few words this evening. These are all up today. Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Study session, right? Whatever you'd like.
I need to clean up my space so I don't get abated.
That was a good one. I'm gonna have to bait that.
I like his tie. What's wrong with it?
It's a barb.
I like it.
Jerry Garcia.
I almost said Jerry Maguire.
Show me the money.
You had me at that. Good job.
I have a tie on backward.
Those that still count. I have a tie, I have many ties at home in the closet.
He's playing with a tie every day, his grandma.
Oh, does she make them?
She buys them. Wears one every day.
Okay, ready?
I'm gonna turn this over to Crystal James' team to talk to us and give us an overview of the CIP.
Seeing as it's the late hour, I'm gonna let our team just jump in and introduce themselves and, uh, jump right, right into it.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protim, Council. I'm Michael Parlow. Me and my colleagues, Fred Gillen.
Fred Gillen.
Um, we're from the policy and budget team. Very happy to, uh, have the opportunity to give you an overview of the capital improvement program process, as well as look at the past, present and potential future of the CIP plan. Next slide, please.
So just to look at the agenda quickly for our presentation, start off by providing some helpful definitions, context, difference between major ongoing projects, what continuing appropriations means for the CIP versus how the operating budget works. Um, and then discuss how the CIP has developed. Then we'll discuss CIP, uh, funding sources, how CIP is financed, and take a look back at historic CIP spending by each of those individual funds. Next, we'll show current appropriations by funds, give examples of some recently completed or in project projects, and, uh, take a wide view of the current 2022 to 2026 CIP that was approved by council last October. And then finally, pointing towards the future, we'll describe a few of the requested projects of the upcoming 23, 27, 27 CIP and go over next steps. Next slide, please. All right, first, few helpful definitions related to our CIP. So we divide our CIP projects into two categories, uh, major projects and ongoing projects. And example of, uh, major projects, they're large singular projects with a defined start and end date. And it could be building renovations or rebuilds like municipal core, comprehensive improvements to roadways such as the federal Parkway Improvement Project. But of course, doesn't have to be all, you know, concrete and steel. Can include new hardware and software systems such as fire departments, traffic preemption system. Ongoing projects are those that are more, um, continuous capital improvements such as regular facility repairs that go beyond kind of your normal day-to-day O and M that you'd find in the operating budget. And they also include regular capital replacement schedules such as planned fleet and radio replacements. An important distinction is that compared to the kind of irregular spikes and dips of major project funding, allocations for ongoing projects should be much more consistent year-end. Next slide. All right, so the CIP works differently than our operating budget in that CIP accounts have continuous appropriations that do not lapse at year end. This is because major CIP projects often take several years to complete and it allows particularly large pay-as-you-go or pay-go projects to accumulate funding for future implementation. It's important to note here though that at the year end, staff does do, uh, a review of open CIP projects to see what should be closed out and, um, the remaining funding swept to their respective balances. So moving on to the development process for the CIP, um, it's an inter- uh, excuse me, an iterative continual process between each budget year. So annually, staff does a five-year look ahead that builds on or in some cases takes away from previous year CIP plans. Departments submit their requested edits to policy and budget in May, which then begins the review and prioritization process. And a CIP quarterly, uh, committee meeting in July usually, um, that includes department stakeholders to, uh, make sure that they're communicating with each other about projects that may overlap, uh, or affect each other, as well as provide a, a general understanding and cooperation around which projects might take priority throughout the CIP process. Policy and budget and city managers then put together a proposed five-year CIP budget based on revenue projections, project feasibility, and of course, council's direction of priorities through the strategic plan. Council then reviews and provides further direction resulting in approval and adoption of a five-year CIP in October. So with that, uh, Fred will now go over CIP funds and financial.
Thank you, Michael. Um, so as Michael said, uh, I'm here to, this first slide will cover, um, CIP funding sources. And before jumping into the details of the slide, CIP funding sources include both funds as well as revenue sources within each fund. Funds are basically an accounting mechanism that organize, uh, groups of accounts and keeps money separate that is collected for specific purposes. And many times this is established pursuant to generally accepted accounting principles. Restricted revenues are found within these funds and they must be used on specific purposes. Uh, in contrast, the discretionary sources means that the city council has the discretion in how to use these, um, these discretionary sources. And next we'll just, uh, kind of go through each fund and touch on each one, uh, a little bit, provide you with a little more detail. Yes, sir.
Who puts on the restrictions?
It could be the voters, um, it could be another entity providing us the money. But the voters a lot of times, such as with our post-sales and use taxes, that, that's a good example of one.
Are there any others?
Conservation Trust Fund, Highway Users Tax Fund from the state has to be used for streets maintenance, grant funding, grant funding that's for restricted purpose. I think of the highway user tax.
Yeah.
That's, that's one that's fairly specific, county open space taxes, county road and bridge taxes. So their, their voter, uh, their voter initiatives apply, uh, when those funds come to us as well.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So the first one we'll cover is the General Capital Improvement Fund. And this basically pays for general fund capital projects. And it primarily is limited to paying for capital projects. Uh, however, we do see some operational activity within the fund that generally reflects rebates that might occur, uh, in connection to economic development agreements. So if we take money in and later rebate part of it, that's booked as an operational cost. But everything else is capital within the fund. And then restricted revenues within the General Capital Improvement Fund. Um, examples include the Adams County Transportation Sales Tax. And, uh, they, that's basically money that can be used on the Adams County side of the city for transportation needs, um, asphalt and roadways. Uh, there's also cash-in lieu, various developer fees, uh, cash-in lieu, such as the public land dedication fee, um, as well as park development fees. And another big one that we have are E911 authority, uh, monies that we receive from the Jefferson County Emergency Communications Authority. So they pass that money along to the city so we could use it for our, um, dispatch center. And, uh, let's see, so discretionary, discretionary sources within the general, uh, General Capital Improvement Fund really comprise of transfers from other funds, specifically the general fund. And much of that is linked to sales and use taxes, uh, unrestricted sales and use taxes. As well as, uh, other discretionary sources would include reimbursements from the Westminster Economic Development Authority for past costs that were fronted by the city. And then WEDA will pay us back, uh, pay the city back. So that's another funding source for capital needs as well as smaller revenues such as interest earnings. And essentially, um, basically all departments with a capital project, uh, have projects within this fund. And essentially, basically, all departments with a capital project have projects within this fund. And some departments are more CIP-intensive than others. And one other thing to point out, because of the existence of other funds that are specifically tied to parks, recreation, and libraries, PRL or Parks, Recreation and Libraries allocation within the General Capital Improvement Fund is really limited to use of the public land dedication fees, park development fees, entry mitigation, cash-in-lieu. So I just wanted to clarify that there's some little nuances that Westminster approaches how we allocate some of the money to different departments. The next fund that we have on the list is the General Capital Outlay Replacement Fund. This is mostly for general fund fleet replacements for all general fund departments. But it also includes other expensive capital equipment, such as the self-contained breathing apparatus that the fire department uses. This fund is mostly funded by discretionary transfers from the general fund according to replacement schedules for things like fleet asset replacements. But also, the fund receives interest earnings as well as auction proceeds. So that kind of helps offset some of the costs in the fund. Other funds, such as the Utility Fund, Parks Open Space and Trails, Golf Funds, have their own capital outlay replacement accounts established within their own CIPs to pay for fleet replacements. The next fund on there is the Parks Open Space and Trails Fund. This fund pays for both capital and operations for parks, open space, trails, and recreation needs. Revenues are restricted Westminster post-sales and use taxes, as well as open space taxes received from the counties, and smaller revenues such as interest earnings generated off those restricted sources. Now, the post-funded capital projects are really limited to PRNL uses or for projects benefiting PRNL other than library. That's not, library wasn't part of the ballot question for the post-tax. The next fund that we have on the list is the Conservation Trust Fund. Similar uses as we have with the post-fund, but this can also pay for certain library projects that are public phasing. Unlike the post-fund, the Conservation Trust Fund does not pay for operations. That may just be a city practice, but it's generally limited or directed to the CIP. And as Chris pointed out earlier, the revenues are basically derived from state lottery proceeds and interest earnings generated off those of unspent balances. And according to state statute, this fund is actually required. So that's one reason we also have it as a separate fund here. Beyond just, a lot of times you can set these funds up, it's at our discretion, but it's written into state statute that we have to have a Conservation Trust Fund for these monies. And similarly to the post-fund, CTF-funded projects, capital projects, are limited to PRNL use or for projects benefiting PRNL projects or facilities. The last two funds that we have on the list are enterprise funds. So the first one is the Golf Enterprise Fund. This pays for both operations and capital at the golf courses. Primary revenues include restricted user fees as well as a subsidy from the post-fund. It's basically an inter-fund transfer. And golf-funded capital projects are also limited to PRNL and more specifically at the golf courses. The final fund that we have on the list is the Utility Enterprise Fund. Pays for operations and capital. Oh, it's come, Mayor present.
On the Golf Enterprise Fund for the transfers, does that have similar labor restrictions about a percentage that can come from other sources? That it's not the same kind of enterprise that doesn't have?
It's a business enterprise, but it's not a labor enterprise. Meaning that they can't simply issue debt without a vote. So if we hit the threshold, if it's less than a 10% subsidy, I think we're... Well, it's at about a 10% subsidy right now, but if it's under, they can issue revenue bonds. Well, at your discretion, if you choose to issue bonds and we have the capacity to pay it back with enterprise, then we could do that without a vote. But sometimes that subsidy increases beyond the 10%, and then that would require a vote if we were to issue debt. Yes.
We've never made money on the golf fund, have we?
It's been subsidized to pay back the certificates of participation to pay for Walnut Creek. So it kind of depends upon how you want to look at that continual payment of a big one-time expense, the purchase and construction of that golf course. You know, taking those out, it's closer to breaking even, but it's, no, it's not a break-even. I think we've gotten closer, gotten closer every year. And it doesn't help that we've begun to put some cost-allocated charges into the golf fund that might have been absorbed by the general fund previously. So we, you know, while it was getting to be more balanced, we tipped the scales a bit more, but now it's never been a break-even.
And getting back to the utility enterprise, this pays for operations and capital for the water, wastewater, and storm drainage systems. Again, primary revenue sources are user fees. And the projects that are funded are basically limited to those within Public Works and Utilities as well as community development. And then moving on to the financing methods on the next slide. I won't be as long-winded with this one. So we can find, we have a few methods of financing the CIP. Predominantly, cities use pay-as-you-go or pay-go funding where we accumulate cash to implement projects. And generally, the cash for the CIP is basically whatever money is left over after paying debt service within the funds, as well as operational costs that may be within the funds. As far as debt, the city does issue debt from time to time for projects, but mostly in the enterprise funds. Debt has also been used for general and post projects, but to a lesser degree and less frequent. Debt is usually best suited for very expensive projects with long useful lives where it's difficult to accumulate the money needed to implement the project because as you've seen with the recent inflationary pressures, it would be very difficult to save up the money in that type of inflationary environment. And then, one thing to point out for the council to be aware of is that we do have a lot of general debt service declining or rolling off with payoffs of older debt. And that could be an opportunity in the future should the council decide to debt-finance additional projects that we might have on the radar. And then, let's see, moving on to the next slide. This shows actual CIP expenditures by fund for the last five years, 2017 through 2021. And at a high level of detail, the bar charts, of course, are at a high level of detail by fund, but it basically represents actual expenditures or actual payments made during this time period, not necessarily funding that was added to the CIP. Additionally, the dollars, because of how large they are, they're truncated to thousands on the chart there. But a few observations I would like to point out is that, you know, capital project spending patterns are fairly, are quite variable and can vary considerably from year to year, depending on the underlying project activities and phases. Additionally, you may notice that golf and the post-fund in 2021 suddenly are more prominent on the chart or appear for the first time. And this is intentional because back in 2021, we made a couple of accounting changes. And one of those was for post projects, we made a change to where the capital projects would suddenly start being budgeted directly in the post-fund rather than a former method where we would budget for those projects in the General Capital Improvement Fund. The way it was previously paid for was through a transfer. We felt that this change enhances financial transparency. So you can see post called out specifically on there. So if you want to know how much was spent in the post-fund, for example, you can see it right there. And then if you were to drill down into the details, we could do that. Similarly, golf fund, we also made a change so that all golf projects are budgeted in the golf fund. And if a subsidy is needed, we would handle that as an inter-fund transfer, but we just wanted to specifically highlight those to enhance the financial transparency. And next, Michael will present the current CIP balances by fund.
Thanks, Fred. Next slide, please. Thank you. So going from past spending, this graph shows what's currently appropriated by each fund. And this generally highlights the nature of continuing appropriations in the CIP compared to lapsing appropriations in the operations budget. The largest orange bar there to the left is the General Capital Improvement Fund or GCIF. And just to give you a few examples of some of the large chunks of funding in there, major projects that include about $6 million that's set aside for the municipal court. It also includes the $14.5 million in freed-up ARPA funds that will be re-appropriated soon, given recent council direction. There's also $5 million in downtown parks, PD communications infrastructure at 2.3, and then just a dozen, dozens of many smaller ongoing projects that we kind of discussed before. And then moving to the right, a large portion of the General Capital Outlay Replacement Fund or G-CORF is about $4 million for ongoing public safety fleet replacement. Moving on to Parks Open Space and Trails. This fund includes a lot of smaller ongoing repair projects, but some of the more major projects include $2 million for downtown parks and about 1.6 for major recreation facility improvements. Looking at the Utility Fund, Storm Drainage Fund has about 1.5 million in the Big Dry Creek Stabilization Project and Shaw Heights contributory improvements. And then looking at wastewater and water, as you'd expect, they include some very sizable major infrastructure projects. Wastewater having Big Dry Creek electrical replacement at $8 million. ADA Eighth and Zuni Lift Station at $4 million. And for water, Northridge Storage Tanks, a very large, important project, $15 million. Wattenberg Reservoir Projects at 10. And of course, water treatment plant engineering or future Semper solution at about $1 million. Next slide, please. So, you know, graphs are a great way of showing hunting at a high level, but I think that a better way to see kind of the real-life projects that these funds go to is, you know, through more photographs, narrative. So with that in mind, we wanted to highlight some of the recently completed or in progress CI projects. First of which is Sheridan Boulevard Multimodal Transportation Improvement Project, which is a really big, you know, well, better known as the Sheridan Underpass Project. And the scope, this includes constructing a concrete precast arch underpass beneath Sheridan Boulevard at West 89th Avenue, which will connect downtown Westminster's to the RTD's 36th and Sheridan Station. And then also expand Sheridan Boulevard to a six-lane road from Turnpike Drive to West 88th Place. The total not-to-exceed amount is $9.3 million with about over $6.6 million of that in federal grants and state contributions. And timeline-wise, we anticipate it to be complete by spring of 2023. Next slide. Here's just a couple more photos of Sheridan Underpass. Everyone's probably pretty familiar with the one on the left as you leave City Hall. Next slide, please. Hopefully, this works. So just, this is such a massive project, I want to show you some interesting time-lapsed drone footage that was recently taken, that's really interesting. And it just gives the scale of this project.
I get nauseous.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's a little more choppy than I see it on my computer. Let's see where. A lot of dirt has been moved there. Slide, please. Not yet.
Shelly during operations.
It's frozen. Oh, no. No, I think that's the end. I hope it wasn't frozen.
Stationery, good.
So next, a smaller, but of course, you know, still very important project, Hooker Street Lights and Pedestrian Walkway Improvements. And this is located at Hooker Street from West 72nd Ave to 71st. And the previous conditions of the sidewalk in this area didn't meet ADA compliance or really the city of Westminster standards. And so the project widened the sidewalk to about five feet. It added traffic calming bulbouts and installed eight-solar pedestrian lights. And these lights will provide a more comfortable and well-lit travelway for pedestrians to Westminster Station from 72nd. The not-to-exceed amount for this project was about $305,000. And all of that was funded by a community development block grant. Next slide, please. So next, I'll give a couple examples of on the Parks and Rec side of CIP. And starting with the repaving of the Countryside Park Basketball Court. The court is utilized by...
Nice.
Yeah, by summer camp.
I'm just having bad flashbacks of childhood. You had the basketball.
The damage was Pro Tem's fault from hitting the ground too hard.
Very well possible.
But yeah, it wasn't in great shape before this, for sure. And so scope included a full replacement of that asphalt court. Cost at about $71,000, and it was just completed May of this year. Next slide, please. So City Park Rec Center, the drop-off repaving. So the concrete driveway degraded pretty badly due to moisture and some inadequate construction methods from the previous construction. And so as an example, this is a pretty good example of some inter-departmental coordination. The Streets Division within Public Works and Utilities supported the move to asphalt and can absorb the ongoing maintenance into the city's pavement management program going forward. So that can save money there. Additionally, careful consideration was given to scheduling this work to make sure that it didn't impact summer camp reservations or, you know, numerous activities for the City Park Complex. The total cost for this was $308,000 and was completed in October of 2021. Next slide. The outdoor fitness area here was designed to provide an opportunity for exercise during classes, or I'm sorry, exercise classes during and after the pandemic to facilitate adequate distance separation and outdoor use. So they... So they excavated, installed drainage base layer, purchased and installed all of that outdoor fitness equipment, wired electric for lighting at night. And then also you can see the building compared between those two pictures. They included new windows cut into the large wall of the fitness center to allow additional light and entrance into that building. Total cost was $500,000, but this was mostly paid for with federal cares funds in response to the pandemic. Next slide, please. So those were just a couple examples of recent projects, but of course, we could have a whole study session just going going over different types of projects, water utility, facility improvements at fire stations. But of course, in the interest of time, move on to show you the summary of the current CIP plan for '22 to '26 that was adopted by council on October 25th, 2021. So this chart is actually directly from the 2022 adopted budget and shows the five-year plan broken out by fund. You'll notice that the total by year is a bit front loaded due to water and wastewater having only a one-year plan and a couple of large projects in '22 and '23 for the GCIF. But just to speak to water wastewater, as you may recall, it was decided to do only a one-year plan for water and wastewater, given the ongoing evaluation of a solution at Semper. Otherwise, staff generally tries to smooth out the five-year plan or take into consideration realistic funding and assumptions.
When it comes to the budget, will this council see all of the pieces and parts that go to each one of these? Because this council did not approve that.
Correct, and only the first year is actually adopted. So the out years are planning purposes, and that's part of the annual review.
So for 2023, we'll see whatever the list is.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I kept looking for everywhere and never found it, so.
For 2022?
23.
23. Yes, ma'am.
Since we're getting ready for a budget cycle.
Got it. So looking, next slide, please, unless anyone had any other question. So but looking to the future for '23 to '27, staff have received department CIP submittals in the past few weeks. And, you know, with every budget process, requests are greater than CIP's capacity and tough decisions must be made. So staff has been reviewing them and going through prioritization process for CMO's But we do want to specifically call out some some pretty large facility needs in the out years, including fire station replacements and remaining funding needed for the municipal court. Staff's looking at all possible funding mechanisms, including including debt for that. And that's just, we thought it was important to point out for looking towards the future. But to give council a preview of, I'd like to just speak to some examples of projects that that will likely be recommended by CMO for funding in the '23 to '27 plan. Trailside subdivision roadway improvements, the map and kind of the state of the current roadway, you can see in the PowerPoint, $3 million was requested for that in 2023. An additional 3.6 million was requested for federal parkway improvements from West 120th to 122nd. And then another big project is Lowell Boulevard Water Pipeline Replacement at 12 million requested. So, and just want to point out that that's been flagged by both Senator Hickinlooper and Bennett to be considered for federal grant. So we hope that this overview has been helpful to paint a picture of where the city is at respect to the CIP and where it may be heading for '23 budget process, of course, with continued input and direction from council. Chris, we'll now go to close out our presentation, talk about next steps.
Next slide, please. I would just say thank you for the time this evening, first and foremost, and for Fred and Michael to share this information with you. I know there's a lot of information, especially that list of funds, the types of funding streams, but that's really where the art of the work that we do comes in. So finding all those restrictions, understanding them, and finding what projects can plug into what funding streams, mixing and matching in some places, where can we get federal funding, where can our excellent engineers get Dr. Cog funding or others to maximize every bit of those tax dollars that come in or those restricted revenue streams to really accomplish the great work that the staff is doing for the businesses and the residents. So thank you for your time this evening and allowing us to go through that. So just briefly, I want to hit next steps as we go through our budget process this year in our orientation and development of the 2023 budget process. So in July, we're going to come back to you with an overview of revenue streams coming into the city. The last couple of years, we've been using some expertise out of the Weed School of Business at the University of Colorado. So we've got some folks from the Weed School that'll be here that'll be here as well. We're going to talk to you about how we forecast those revenue streams. And looking forward, but also a little bit looking back, the folks at the Weed School have done actually a fairly incredible job at projecting our revenue streams. So we want to talk a little bit about that success. And August, we'll be back to you to talk about staffing benefits or total compensation model. August, the end of August, the city manager will deliver the proposed budget to city council, including the proposed capital plan for '23 to '27. That really kicks off the intensive process. So we'll hold a public hearing on September 12th to allow the public to provide feedback on that proposed city manager's proposed budget. That allows us to follow that up with a review session with you all on a Monday night at a study session to go through that proposed budget, to go through the public feedback that's been received, all the feedback that we track from the public that we hear through budget development, and we track from you all. And then, of course, we'll come back in October per city charter to go for first and second reading of the budget. And I do want to highlight community requests because I know that's a really important part of the budget process. So just to make sure we're very clear, community budget requests can be made by community budget member, community members, excuse me, at any time during the budget development process, and we track them, we track them through access Westminster email, what you send, what you send to staff, what departments receive, those that we hear are public comments, that we hear are public hearings on the budget. Such requests are welcome in all matters, in all manners, excuse me, such as email, mail, phone call, online, in person. We log all of those. We track those as part of the budget development process. Those are researched by respective department staffs. We come back to council with recommendations, and a write-up is then prepared back and shared back to those folks that submit requests to the process so that we, they know we handled those and the attention that was paid to those. As part of the delivery of the proposed budget, you see those requests and the recommendation that staff makes on those, and then we look to council for concurrence on those recommendations or to provide us other direction with how to handle those. Those are finalized and then included in our final, our final budget document.
Good question. What was an example of community budget request that actually went through and got done?
Yeah, so we had.
Oh, I know a good one.
We had some, oh my gosh, those lighted walkway.
All those signs. Yeah, the flashing pedestrian crosswalk signs. Sorry, I can't hear you. What? Oh, the flashing pedestrian crosswalk signs, that's an example.
Had a few of those recently.
A little boy and his mom would come for a couple of years and talk about him not having a park, and it was one of our undone parks. And third year, I think, was a charm. He got it.
Topspin.
It's up in Cheyenne.
Cheyenne, Ridge, maybe?
Yeah, I think so.
So we, those are, those are really important to us, and I will tell you, I haven't seen the level of detail that we, that we put into those on any other organization I've been a part of. So that's important to us. If you want to go back and look, my staff gave me the citation, page 229 to 233 in the, in the 2022 budget document, if you want to go back and look at those. And then the really important date for the public that's listening, take a look at that proposed budget after it's delivered on August 31st, and then come back on September 12th and give us, to give us any feedback that you've got on those. And that's all that, that I have and the staff have.
I would just ask, since staffing is a huge part of our, you know, annual budget, to make sure that we have enough time allotted for that, because that's going to need a little deeper dive.
I haven't answered this, but I'm going to ask anyway, since it was one I heart-bombed for. We finished the rifle program, right, last year with the third year of that? Am I correct? What program?
We have been funding it. I, I.
Feel like last year.
I feel like it was too, but I.
I think it was, but.
Could you follow up with me on that?
Yes. Yeah.
I thought about that on the way in here, and I'm like, I'm pretty sure that's done, right? Or at least last year was. As part of the CIP.
That was funded.
Operating budget.
Yeah. I'll follow up on that. We've been, we've been funding the amount that was requested by the police department, though.
And follow up to that, and if you could, with that information, understanding that part of that expenditure was training, and since you always get new people on, I'm just curious how we handle ongoing training as new officers join our department, being that maybe other departments, even if they're lateral, they might not have got training or new officers. Thank you.
Will do.
I don't see any other fingers up. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Let's take five, and we'll be back for executive session.
Live on fire. Okay. We have reason for executive session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
It's 11:15 PM.
Thank you, Mayor. And as council has already voted to enter into the executive session, I would suggest perhaps announcing to the public that we'll conclude the broadcast so that we can now enter into that session.
The meeting for tonight is now over. It's 11:15. Have a great night.